Right, if you'll take your seats please. Right, thank you everybody. Before we move on to item six, I've been asked by a couple of councillors if they could say a few words in memory of former councillor Doug Edwards, who you will be aware passed away very recently. Councillor Thomas, would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you Chair. I just want to say very briefly to pay tribute to councillor Doug Edwards, who served on Abingbenny Town Council for many years, but also did, I believe, a number of sessions on the county council. And I have to pay tribute in the sense that Doug stuck out for bringing back a Iced Edward Kennedy Life, the nationalised Iced Edward, to Abingbenny in 2016. And also, he was highly instrumental in setting up the community centre at Park Street, which had been a former primary school. And without Doug, those two things would not have happened. He also rejuvenated the youth Iced Edward in Abingbenny. So he contributed a great deal on that front. But just generally, without going into all the detail, Doug was just a very community-minded person. He'd had a successful business, he'd been in accountancy, brought up three children etc. But he devoted an incredible amount of time to the community of Abingbenny, both in Grove Fields and Cantriff Ward, and was with the Lib Dems. I attended his funeral on Friday, and for a man of 90 years old, he's had a very full and fulfilling life, but Gwent Crematorium was almost full with people who wanted to pay tribute. And I think that was a sign of a really long but well-lived life, and somebody who really gave to the community throughout much of his time. So I really do take my hat off to Doug for all that he did, both on Abingbenny Town Council, he was mayor twice, but also on the county council here in this chamber. So as far as I'm concerned, a really good county councillor, a really good town councillor. Thanks. Thank you councillor Thomas. And councillor Powell?
Yes, thank you very much. I too was at his funeral last Friday. I first met Doug when he and his wife both stood for the town council in Abingbenny many, many years ago, and I was at the count. And I remember thinking to myself, it's quite strange the husband and wife both standing for council together. Well, I've known Doug for many, many years. And as was said, you know, he was involved in so many things. But he was always helpful to anybody and everybody in the town. He worked so hard. And of course, bringing back the Iced Edward and putting all that together was wonderful. And he was a really good friend. We weren't in the same party obviously, but we always got on very well together. And he will be missed a great deal. He got to a great age, and I think it's about 12 months ago that I last spoke to him, and he was out on his motorised little buggy thing. But he'd been without his wife for a few years. But he was one of those people that everybody in Abingbenny knew, everybody in Abingbenny was thankful to for all the things he'd done. And he will be remembered. As we said, there was tremendous people at the funeral. I'm pleased to say that Paul Matthews is there as well, so he respected him. And, you know, he will never be forgotten because of all the things he has done, not just for Abingbenny, but further in the county. Thank you.
Apologies, no mic. Right, sorry. We now move on to item six on the agenda, which is to elect a leader of the county council, and to receive notification of leader delegations, that is appointments to Cabinet. Have I a nomination?
Chair, I'd like to nominate councillor Mary Anne Brocklesby.
Right, is there a second there?
Chair, yes, I'd like to second that nomination.
Seconded there. Are there any other nominations?
Chair, I'd like to propose councillor Richard John.
All right, and is there a second there?
I would like to second.
Right, so councillor Neil moving, and councillor Dimmock seconding. Okay, right. Do we ask people to speak?
Yeah, they can.
Yeah, all right. If the two nominees would like to speak in order in which they were nominated, councillor Brocklesby, just five minutes.
Thank you Chair. I'm honoured once again to accept the nomination to be leader of this council. It is a role that I have given everything I have to for the last three years. And I continue to work for the best of Monmasheer County Council. From day one, I have said to everybody in the chamber that I believe we are far stronger when we recognise our commonality. And the fundamental part of our commonality is our love for Monmasheer, for our willingness to serve in a way that is a commitment to serving the people of Monmasheer, and our acceptance that there is so much that happens in this county that needs to be done through consensus, not through conflict and oppositional politics. And I will always stand by that. I will also, once elected, make it clear of my record for the last three years. And for that, I will step down now and hand over to the other nominee, because I do have more to say later.
Thank you Chair. Well firstly, I have enormous respect for councillor Brocklesby. She is a tireless campaigner, and I have enormous respect for the way in which she has conducted her role. But we do have a number of concerns about the way that the authority has been run over the last three years, the decisions that have been made, and the impact that it's had on our residents. So we think that this county, this council can be better than it is. We think there is significant room for improvement, and whatever the result of this vote, we will continue to put forward new ideas of things that can be done differently, different ways of working, trying to ensure that this council is at the forefront of innovation. We feel that there has been a number of shortcomings in the way that the administration has approached the range of challenges it has faced. There has been a failure to effectively work with our residents. We are concerned about the failure to support local businesses, the fact that procurement appears to be skewed in favour of bigger business. We want to put forward an administration that works in the service of the people of Monmasheer, that directly addresses the concerns that they have. And we feel that this administration has failed to do that. We want to ensure that older people have confidence that they are going to receive the care and dignity that they deserve, that younger people have every opportunity to grow in a safe nurtured environment, and that we're working effectively as a council with our school improvement partners to support our teachers, and make sure that young people have the best opportunities they possibly can. We feel there are too many areas where this council has failed to deliver for residents in Monmasheer. So we think there is a better way, an alternative vision, and that's why we are making this nomination today. We entirely recognise that whatever the result of this vote, an administration will be elected, that is unlikely to command a working majority in this chamber. And that means that whatever the result, there is a requirement to work across party political divisions. And that is something we would absolutely be committed to doing. So those are some of the areas where we would like to see improvements, and we will see how members vote. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. We now put that to the vote. Right, done in a normal way, electronically, yeah, okay. Right, just wait for that to go up. Yes, that's up on the chat now.
Chair, am I allowed to ask for a recorded vote please?
Yep, anybody can ask for a recorded vote. If you have nine, if you have a show of hands of nine to support. Yeah.
Chair, the voting started. I thought it had to be before the vote.
That's correct Chair, it's already started, it's too late unfortunately.
Right, I get a ruling on that. Yeah, we'll have to proceed, because the voting's already started. It's already started. Yeah, I'm advised the vote had already started, so we'll need to proceed just electronically.
Yeah, I'm the same Chair.
Are you in chat?
Yeah, I'm in chat.
Yes, just log me out.
I have a feeling we might end up with a roll call vote anyway, we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, I think so. No, it's not coming up mine.
Forty-two, forty-three votes cast at the moment.
Ah, got it.
Okay, it's only two, so that's a roll call vote. It's only one if I... Is it working? It is. Now we've got forty-three, forty-four voted. We've got at least one not here, forty-five. Well, it's going to be one, oh no, we've got two there, right. Have you voted? Forty-four, forty-five voted, we've got one absent. Have you voted then? Yeah, I've voted, yeah. I think, yeah, everybody's voted there now, haven't they?
Yeah. Is it not the case if there's only two in it, that we need a roll call vote? Yeah? I'm going to call a roll call vote, yeah?
Yeah, I'd do that. Okay, well you can see the results on the screen, but in the corners with standing orders, because the majority is only two, we will need to call a roll call vote in any case. So thank you for that. Yeah. Right, well the numbers I've got is for Mary Anne Brocklesby, for councillor Brocklesby, twenty-three, for councillor John, twenty-one, and I've got one abstention. And, yeah, we got, so that's forty, forty-five, and I think we might have one absentee at the moment, or one not voted at least.
Okay councillors, councillor Bond please.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Bromfield.
Councillor John.
Councillor Brown.
Councillor John.
Councillor Bryn.
Abstain.
Councillor Buckler.
Councillor John.
Councillor Birch.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Butler.
Councillor Richard John.
Councillor Callard.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Chandler.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Crook.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Davis.
Councillor John.
Councillor Dimmock.
Councillor Richard John.
Councillor Easton.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Edwards.
Councillor John.
Councillor Newell.
Councillor Richard John.
Councillor Garrett.
Councillor Mary Anne Brocklesby.
Councillor Garrett. Councillor Griffiths.
Brocklesby.
Councillor Grokhet.
Brocklesby.
Councillor Howes.
Councillor John.
Councillor Howells.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor John.
Councillor Richard John.
Councillor David Jones.
Councillor Richard John.
Councillor Penny Jones.
Councillor John.
Councillor Keir.
Councillor Richard John.
Councillor Lane.
Councillor Richard John.
Councillor Lucas.
Councillor John.
Councillor Mayby.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor McConnell.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor McKenna.
Councillor Richard John.
Councillor Murphy.
Councillor John.
Councillor Neil.
Councillor John.
Councillor Pavia.
Councillor John.
Councillor Powell.
Councillor John.
Councillor Riley.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Ruck.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Sandals.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Stevens.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Jackie Strong.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Peter Strong.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Councillor Taylor.
Councillor John.
Councillor Thomas.
Brocklesby.
Councillor Watts.
Brocklesby.
Councillor Webb.
Councillor John.
Councillor Wright.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you. Sorry, the result of the vote is for councillor Brocklesby, twenty-three, councillor John, twenty-two, with one abstention. Thank you. So I declare councillor Brocklesby elected leader of the council for the following year. Councillor Brocklesby.
So Chair, fellow councillors, members of the public, as our administration now commences our fourth year in office, I thank you all for the confidence you continue to place in me and my administration. The honour and privilege I feel in serving the people of Monmasheer is stronger than ever. My role and responsibilities that it brings with it is not something I will ever take for granted. And as you can see, no sane person ever stood for office in local government thinking it's going to be easy. Squaring the circle of urgent and growing need with scant resources is and always has been the name of the game. It's a job description of local government. Looking back over the last three years, I am conscious how each year I remind council of the unprecedented challenges facing our residents, the cost of living, flooding, housing costs, extreme challenges for local businesses, and the very tough choices that face our authority itself. And last year, after Jeremy Hunt's spring budget, the future looked bleak. We were facing being forced to cut and end services when the climate and nature crises deepened and need continued to rise. So no, it was never going to be easy. But now we are seeing positive changes. And now I am more hopeful and certain that our red and green coalition will meet our pledge to deliver what matters to the people of Monmasheer. The new Labour government made a difference, valuing the role of public services and enabling the Welsh government to put a further £261.7 million into the local authority pot. Council knows I fought tirelessly for a fair settlement for Monmasheer, securing a 3.8% uplift. And we have used the money wisely, with our priorities of equality, fairness and the environment driving every decision we made. Funding for education is increasing by 11.3%. And for the first time in a long time, we invested in our schools with an extra £1 million for them, an uplift of 10.6% for social care and health. And we are making a capital investment of £2.3 million in some of our key infrastructure, predominantly around highways, structures, caridues, ways, footpaths, public rights of way in our property. And we put money back into our reserves. But make no mistake, our people, our places, our businesses, ourselves still face tough choices and challenges. After three years, we are in a far better position than we were when we took over the administration to deal with the challenges and financial pressures ahead. And true to our values, we will listen and work in partnership with and for our communities. We stay committed to the path we have taken because we know that the priorities of the community and corporate plan are making a real difference to the lives of the people who live and work in our county. Let me remind you councillors of some of the positive changes that we've made. Our relentless focus on reducing homelessness, increasing the number of affordable houses to rent or buy is by paying off. Last year, we bought or built 91 affordable houses, adding to the 70 we built the year before. We have increased our stock of temporary homeless accommodation. Since 2023, the number of households in bed and breakfast has reduced from 94 to 20, and our spending on B&amp;B is down from £2.1 million to £1.6 million. Our Compass programme works with young people at risk of homelessness, keeping them safe in their family homes or elsewhere. Our successful introduction of premiums for second homes and empty houses has led to more properties coming back into use, and realised an extra £900k to support affordable housing and homelessness programmes. In education, I want to start by paying tribute to the dedication of our teachers and education teams. All our learners are benefiting from our joint commitment to support every learner and meet their potential. For our most vulnerable and disadvantaged children, our inclusion team are demonstrating that by bringing together a range of specialist-focused support for those children who do not fulfil their potential, often those who are the most vulnerable, economically deprived or failing to thrive, we can turn around lives and improve their chance to leave school with qualifications and purpose. We have opened two new bases for our pupil referral units, strengthening specialist support for learners at risk of falling out of education. We achieved the second high GCSE outcomes in Wales compared to local, other local authorities. Our primary schools attain the highest level of attendance in Wales. We've partnered with the Autism Education Trust to create an innovation and inclusive programme for learners with autism across our schools. Nowhere is partnership more important or sustained than in working to reduce the worst effect of cost of living crisis on the most vulnerable people in our communities. In January, we launched the Monmasheer Food Action Network together with 14 organisations to pool knowledge and resources, give advice on funding and best practice to enable better targeting and support for individuals and households living with chronic food security. 1,440 meals were distributed to households, 360 cook-at-home meal kits, and for over 90% receiving those kits, it reduced their weekly food bill. Connecting the most vulnerable to the community and support was strengthened by almost £30,000 of Welsh Government funding to give to 30 organisations to provide warm hubs for places to meet, eat and socialise for those in need of support. And 100 Warm Packs were distributed to individuals. And our community hubs continue to be safe, warm and inclusive places, providing advice, support and signposting for every type of query and need for help in obtaining blue badges, advice on benefits, helping people at risk of eviction, or people wanting to know where the nearest community and growing area is. Our family support services are working tirelessly to ensure that where vulnerable children can remain safely at home, they are supported to do so. The impact? There are fewer looked after children. With a new improved offer for foster care, as we are seeing arise in the number of applications, we have in the last year opened a 16-plus home to support care-experienced young people reach independence in their own home and community. Our administration's determination to transform how we support adults to stay within their homes and communities is to see a year-on-year fall in the number of hours of unmet needs, despite the ever creasing demand for our services. We now support over 1,500 adults, 85% of whom have told us they are satisfied with the care they receive. That leaves no room for complacency councillors, and we continue to work with health partners to strengthen the delivery of our social care packages. Our joint work with the Anurim Bevan University Health Board on assistant tech hubs, for example, is transforming our services for people living with dementia. Well-being and good health matters to us, and as it does to our residents. We have worked with our partners in health, housing, mental health and civic groups to support residents and improve their well-being and quality of life. And we have been able to reduce the cost for families who previously could not afford our services. Over £1 million has been invested on our leisure centres, which are slowly but surely transforming themselves into accessible well-being hubs. Listening to the residents about their needs has seen investments in facilities which directly benefit, for example, our partnership with Level Water to provide swimming lessons for disabled and neurodivergent children, and the increased take-up of our Fit for Life programmes. And it is working. We have seen a boost in income this year by £500,000, with membership retention at 21 months, way above the industry average of 12.5 months. And I'm particularly proud of the rollout of our free school meals, completed one year ahead of schedule, resulting in a boost to uptake in school meals. We are seeing over 70% on average take-up, and in schools where take-up was initially under 50%, they have now moved up into the mid-sixes. Our food and beverages are increasingly supported locally, not only supporting the growers and producers, but strengthening the links between our schools and farming communities.
One minute councillor.
Okay, coupled with food education, learner-growing spaces, cooking clubs and the innovative tasting Tuesdays, where adults and children sit together to enjoy a school lunch, we're supporting our children to learn, thrive and build skills for a healthy future. Turning to Cabinet, and pardon me, I have run over, it was with sadness I accepted councillor Manfred Grokhet's resignation from Cabinet for personal reasons. He has been dedicated to improving education for all our learners, and I know he will be greatly missed by everyone in our school community. I will also miss his good-humoured challenge in Cabinet and his unrelenting efforts to improve the life chances of our most vulnerable and disadvantaged children. His legacy speaks for itself, the setting up of the first inclusion unit to ensure no learner in Monmasheer is left behind, the first in Wales Autism in School Programme, and the first zero-carbon three-to-19 school in Wales, King Henry.
If you could draw to a close and outshore our appointments if you will please.
Okay, thank you Martin. I'm sure you'll all join me in wishing him good will in his new role. We could hope for no better champion for Monmasheer. In his place, I am delighted to welcome to Cabinet councillor Laura Wright, who has the chutzpah and feet large enough to fill her predecessor's shoes. I look forward to her leadership and continuing to provide inclusive education for all our people. Finally, I pay tribute to every single Cabinet member. I respect their skills and experience. I thank them for their sheer hard work and commitment. Despite the step-backs, the relentless financial and political pressure, they have remained resolute, day in, day out, to find solutions, sustainable and innovative, to the deep challenges facing our people, our places, our council. We are a team who challenge and support. Because of deep shared values and a shared belief that cooperation is the only way to get things done, we are delivering and continue to deliver on our promise to the people of Monmasheer of a greener, fairer and stronger place. Thank you council.
Right, thank you councillor. Okay, now in our excitement, we managed to skip item five, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting. So I will skip back to that before we move on to item seven. Yeah, oh no, wouldn't be seven, whatever. Okay, can I have somebody to move acceptance of, oh I think I move that, don't I? Move acceptance of the minutes. Any issues? I'll take that as read then, thank you very much. Right, we now move on to... Right, we now move on to, yes, it is item seven, representation of political groups review, and this is a report led by councillor Sandals.
Ithel Gudarif. Item seven is a legal requirement for council to review the representation of political groups across the council's committees. This report sets out the allocation of seats for the council's committees on a proportional basis that reflects the representation of each of the council's political groups. The calculations that are set out within the report lay the basis for subsequent reports in relation to the appointments made to committees and outside bodies. Council is requested to approve this report.
Thank you. Can we take a vote on that report? Yeah, can we take a vote on the report? Okay, are any comments before we take a vote? Okay, moving, yeah, moving to a vote on that report then please. Yep, on your screens now. Right, that is very clearly passed. Let's see if we get a full house there, not quite, almost, so very clearly passed. Right, move on to the next item, which is appointments to committees, which again is councillor Sandals.
Ithel Gudarif. Item eight, this report seeks to confirm the membership of the council's committees and their terms of reference for the forthcoming council year in accordance with this council's constitution. The report also highlights that it is the responsibility of this council to appoint the Chair of the Democratic Services Committee. Unless a member wishes to speak specifically on this appointment or committee structure, can I recommend that group leaders email Democratic Services to confirm their appointments to each committee, and we move to receiving nominations for the Chair of Democratic Services Committee. I'll now hand over to the Chair.
Thank you. Right, move to a vote on that, or do we have any comments? No comments? Right.
Sorry Chair, I might have missed the last line. Hand over to the Chair to invite nominations for the Chair of-
Oh, all right, sorry. Nominations for Chair of Democratic Services, yeah, oh thank you, sorry about that. Okay, so I'm asking for nominations for Chair of Democratic Services. Councillor John.
Thank you Chair, I would like to nominate councillor Lisa Dimmock.
Right, and do we have a second there? Yes councillor Powell, thank you. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate councillor Myrian House.
Right, thank you councillor Garrett nominating councillor Marion House. Yeah, and seconded by councillor Chandler, right. Okay, can we go straight-
Point of order Chair.
Yes.
I understood, I can't, forgive me, I can't remember the exact number of the standing order, but the Chair of the Democratic Services Committee has to come from a member of an opposition group, and councillor Marion House is not in an opposition group.
Perhaps I can clarify on the matter Chair. The constitution says at paragraph ten three three that the Chair of the Democratic Services Committee mustn't sit on the Cabinet, so that's the only restriction. Provided that the individual is not on the Cabinet, then he or she can stand as Chair.
Chairman, may I just ask for a point of clarity on the Democratic Services from our legal garant Edwards. Democratic Services has to be an opposition member, the legal jargon is, it has to be part of the legal administration, the opposition administration, not leading group. So if you take the Cabinet, for example, of eight members, you end up with then, let's say, another, in this administration, another fifteen leading group members. Can I just have some clarity and just take a bit of time making sure that is right? Because if you've just took that out of the textbook straight away now in uni beforehand, I would like to send an email of that, because it seems to me as though that's what you've just done. Can I just have, just making sure we cover that properly please?
I think we've been given clarity in that the paragraph has been identified, you all have copies of the constitution. Councillor Chandler.
Thank you. Just to clarify on the point, it's, people are saying that the member has to be a member of an opposition group. I think it's already been clarified that they can't be a member of a cabinet, but I do want to just put the record straight in terms of councillor Howells's position. Councillor Howells is not part of the administration, he's not part of the coalition, and therefore he is effectively part of the opposition when it comes to that. But let me finish, let me finish. I think it's important to recognise that councillor Howells has been an active member of the Democratic Services Committee since the beginning of this council in twenty twenty-two, and he's obviously been a previous Chair of this council, and he brings an awful lot to the position of Chair of Democratic Services. But most importantly, what the qualities he's bringing is that he has a huge and strong commitment to engaging with-
Yeah, I'm really only taking clarification on the constitutional issue, so I'm going to move straight on if you wouldn't mind. Yeah, I'm going to move on to councillor Taylor who's got to hand up.
Chair, sorry, further to that point of order, I can read you point two point two.
Okay, I'll come back to you, I'll come back to you, but I won't deny councillor Taylor, brief if you can, looking for constitutional points.
So it is a constitutional point, so if I understood what Garant said, that means then a member of the Labour Group could also chair Democratic Services, am I correct in that? Because that wasn't my understanding, because what you said is, it just means they can't be a member of the Cabinet. Thank you Chair.
Okay, I'll take councillor John before I bring Garant back in.
Chair, I think I can provide some clarity on this. So point two point two of the report before us says the Chair of the Democratic Services Committee cannot be a member of the Executive or the Executive Group. There are two groups in the Executive, and councillor Howells is a member of one of those two groups. So we do not believe he is eligible for this position. It can only go to those groups that are not in the Executive, which are the Conservative and the Independent Group.
Okay, I'm just going to take advice on this.
Chair, I've got my hand up. Got my hand up.
Okay councillor Easton on the constitutional point now please.
Yeah, councillor John is pretty well correct, well he is correct, but, no, no, sorry, but councillor Howells is an independent member of this council. He's not, no, he is an independent member of this council, he is not a Green member or a member of the coalition, as far as I'm concerned.
Seeing us so keen on constitutional standing orders, you will read the one that says, or talk it through the Chair please, not across the room. Thank you councillor Easton. Right, I'll make you for a ruling.
Councillor John, can I just ask you to clarify the point, the specific reference that you just drew from your last input? Thank you.
Yeah, so the report that's before us, if you look at point two point two, and I've just put it in the chat bar, it says that the Chair of the Democratic Services Committee cannot be a member of the Executive or the Executive Group. So we're not talking about the Green Party here, we're talking about the Executive Group. There are two groups represented in the Executive Coalition, and councillor Howells is a member of one of those two groups. So I do not believe that anyone from the Labour Group or the Green Independent Group is eligible to be Chair of the Democratic Services Committee. That's point two point two in the report that's before us.
Would it be helpful if I was to clarify that I don't see, that I don't see-
Ah, 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 doing it again. I'm happy for clarification, but briefly please, and you'll need to persuade the monitoring officer, not me.
Okay, would it be helpful to clarify that I don't see that the Green Independent Group is part of the administration? I see that me as an individual has formed a coalition with the Labour Group, and therefore that I have pledged my vote to the Labour Group for the vote for leader and for the vote for the budget and to be part of the coalition, but as a group, we're not part of the administration, and we don't take part in discussions of the administration.
Chair, may I make a point of order? Which might help clarify your own deliberations? So just to confirm, we've looked into it further, there is a degree of contradiction here between the constitution and the underlying legislation. We've checked the legislation, which is the Local Government Wales measure, and that does state that the Chair of the Democratic Services Committee cannot be a member of the Executive, so that would effectively trump what's in paragraph ten three three of the constitution.
The Executive Group.
The Executive Group, yes.
Right, well, the ruling is then that the nomination of councillor Howells is not in order because he is a member of the Executive Group, yeah.
Point of order, could you define what you mean by Executive Group? Because we have no agreement at all with Myrian, who is an independent. I've been saying it for two, three years now.
Chairman, can I just speak a second, one second please, thank you. The question's been asked, I'm going to try to get an answer.
We'll have the recording from about thirty seconds.
Chair, may I make a point of order? Clearly, there's clearly a discrepancy between the legislation, what's in the policy paper, which sets out the intention behind this nomination, and then further discrepancy in terms of what's in our own constitution.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to move the meeting on by getting the appropriate advice, but I cannot do that.
I have a very practical solution if I may, Chair.
I cannot do that if you're talking into my ear. Lots of people think they've got solutions.
But may I at least have the opportunity to offer my solution Chair?
Please, please.
May I at least have the opportunity to make an intervention and provide a solution?
Right, but clearly is a difference of interpretation here, so what we're going to do is we're going to move on to the next item, and then we'll come back to it later on the agenda today, yeah, when we've had a chance to look into it in more detail, all right? That's my ruling, that's my ruling, I'm going to move on, if you want to speak on it, you might get a chance later on. Right, so we now move on to, where were we? Item nine, outside bodies report, councillor Sandals again.
Ithel Gudarif.
Chair, I don't think we voted on the previous report.
No, we are going to go back to the previous report, right?
Right, okay.
Item eight, which would include the discussion about Chair of Democratic Services, yeah, and that will be today, part of agenda, right.
Item nine, appointments to outside bodies. Similar to the previous report considered, or not yet considered, the council is required to appoint members to outside bodies to ensure the council has a voice and is represented on various organisations. The current appointments to outside bodies is attached to this report. A number of the appointments in the report are for the term of council and have already been agreed at previous AGMs. Group leaders have been consulted on the appointments to ensure they remain up to date, and any changes are reflected in the appendix of the report, and I recommend moving to the vote to approve these appointments. Ithel.
Thank you councillor. Are any comments before we move to a vote? A comment from councillor Easton, I can see.
Yeah, just to run a comment on the fact that I was appointed to the Local Access Forum. I spent three weeks travelling across Monmasheer the other day, got to the meeting, they didn't know I was a member. Could you make sure that I'm on the list?
Thank you, yeah. Right, are we ready for votes? That is clearly passed, yeah, so we'll move on to the next item. Item ten is going to be moved to the end of the agenda under exempt business, so that will come after questions to members. We now move on to members' motions, and we have two motions today. The first one is from councillor Dimmock. Yes, you'd like to move that formally, and then I'll get a second there, yeah, do we have a second there? A second there, councillor John, right, councillor Dimmock.
Thank you Chair. Can I start by thanking councillor Armand Watts and members of the Public Service Scrutiny Committee on Monday for allowing me to attend a discussion with National Highways regarding the upcoming restrictions on the M48 Bridge? It was clear that this council recognises the vital importance of the M47 Bridge as a strategic transport route to our county's economy and connectivity. The recent announcement of the impending ban on heavy goods vehicles crossing the M48 due to structural concerns has raised significant concern among local businesses. Councillor Richard John and I met with the Road Hallage Association and Hicks Transport Group, which are part of Evans Transport Group, only a few weeks ago, and listened to the impact this will have on haulage firms who rely heavily on this route for efficient crossing border trade and distribution. I'd just like to note that part of Severbridge Industrial State falls within my ward, and obviously there are a number of haulage and manufacturing companies, one of which I do work for, that this will impact. The sudden diversion of HGV traffic to the already congested M4, particularly around junction twenty-three A at Meiga, and the B4245 from Meiga to Caldicott poses a serious risk of increased delays, road safety issues, poor air quality and long-term economic disruption, as well as impacting the residents and infrastructure. This motion therefore calls on Welsh Government and Monmasheer County Council to urgently assess the immediate and future implications of these restrictions, and to prioritise investment to improve in the road structure around junction twenty-three A and the traffic light sequence. Furthermore, we urge both Welsh and UK governments to work collaboratively to identify and implement a medium-turn solution that would enable the safe and controlled reintroduction of HGV movements on the M48 seven bridge. It notes, so my motion is, it notes of concern the impending ban on HGVs crossing the M48 Bridge and the implications for local haulage firms. Calls on Welsh Government and Monmasheer Council to urgently assess the current projected traffic impacts at junction twenty-three A, M4 to Meiga, as a result of the M48 seven bridge restrictions, and bring forward costed proposals to improve the road infrastructure around junction twenty-three A, Meiga, to ensure traffic can safely and effectively be managed. And it calls on Welsh Government and UK Government to work at pace on a medium-turn solution to introduce controlled HGV movements on the M48 seven bridge as soon as possible. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor, I'm on three now, I'm going to hold now.
I'm happy to second Chair.
I'm from Councillor John Crook.
Sorry, my mic's off. I'm from Councillor John Crook.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I would like to bring a proposed amendment to that motion, if I may. In the item of, we call on Welsh Government to urgently progress the Burns Commission recommendations to construct a wrinkle between the A48 and the B4245 to reduce congestion on the junction of 23A, Meir interchange.
Do we have a second, Councillor Sandals? Right. Councillor Dimmock, do you accept that amendment?
I accept that amendment.
Right. Given that amendment has been accepted, we don't even need to vote on it, that will become part of the substantive motion. Right, I'll now open it for any debate on the substantive motion. I see a hand for Councillor Griffiths, is it? Yep, thank you.
Thanks very much, Chair, and thanks very much to Councillor Dimmock for bringing this motion to the council. I regard it as a very important motion. I thank Councillor Crook for suggesting the amendment, I think that adds purposefully to the motion. The reason that I think it is important, and I speak as the Cabinet Member with the responsibility for economy, is like others, I have spent part of the last fortnight visiting businesses in the south of the county, particularly in New House Farm. They are seeking a voice, and they have an expectation that this council supports them in providing that voice. That is our role, and that is the effect, I believe, of this motion, and why I urge everyone to support it. When passed, and I hope it is passed, I will regard it as an instruction to continue my work as a Cabinet Member in pursuing those aims. We all know the proposal, that vehicles in excess of 7.5 tonne will no longer be able to use the M48 bridge. If their destination is Port Scuit, or Chepstow, or indeed the Forest of Dean, they will be expected to continue along the M4 bridge, get to the Meir junction, do a U-turn, and come back to their destination. The firms that I've been speaking to are in fear of the impact of that policy. They cannot be sure, but they are in fear of the impact. To what extent will it slow down their businesses? To what extent will it influence the viability of their businesses? To what extent will it influence investment decisions which they may make or others may make about them? Many of them, of course, are subsidiaries of larger organisations. So they see the threat, and I see the threat, as being significant. They are asking that there is urgent, well, before I get on to the action, they have come to accept, their first reaction was often just hostility, how can they do this to us? They are willing to accept that there is an issue which has to be addressed. The evidence which has been forthcoming is that the loads on the bridge will in the fullness of time cause a deterioration, and could. I don't believe it will happen, UK Highways don't believe it will happen, but unless something is done, the deterioration poses its own risks. So they accept that something must be done. But in addition to the restriction, what they're asking is that action is taken, particularly in this case by Welsh Government, urgent action, to improve the flow of traffic at the Meir junction. It is affecting, they believe, and will affect their businesses, it will of course affect the residents of Meir as well. So however difficult, they want urgent action by Welsh Government on that junction. They have also noted that if the Burns Commission recommendation of an access to the M48 from Roggett had been put in place, then that would mitigate very positively the effect of this restriction. So they want urgent action by Welsh Government to review their previous decision and put that junction in place as quickly as possible. They have noted the argument by UK Highways, that it may take eighteen months to find an interim solution, and that the interim solution may involve reducing the load by staggering the flow of heavy goods vehicle across the bridge. And if that is the right proposal, that would require a place on each side of the bridge where lorries can be held back and staggered. And they are saying to UK Highways, confirm that that is a solution, and once you've confirmed it, don't wait eighteen months. You can put it in place in three months, six months, whatever, but act quickly. So the effect of this motion, and the reason I support it so enthusiastically, is that something has to be done. It can be done quickly, but it is our role as a council to put the pressure on Welsh Government and UK Highways and English Government to make sure that happens. To that end, we have already, as a leadership anticipating this motion, put in place arrangements so that we speak directly to Ken Skates, the Welsh Government Transport Minister, before the end of this month on this issue. And we note that only today our MP has got an assurance from the UK Government Transport Minister that she again will be meeting her and other representatives of Monmouthshire to consider the same case. So I urge you all to support this motion.
Thank you, Councillor. I have a hand, I can't recognise who it is from the thumbnail photo, number two on the screen.
I think that's me, Chair. Councillor Pavia, I think it's me. Thank you, Chair. I welcome the opportunity to support this motion proposed by my colleague, Councillor Dimmock. I commend her for bringing it forward. As she said, she represents a number of haulage firms in her board, and it's clear that they, and as Councillor Griffiths has just said, like many others across Monmouthshire, face serious challenges as a result of these forthcoming restrictions. And those restrictions are due to coming on the 27th of May. So let's not be, you know, kid ourselves in terms of the timescales here, that we were given 27th of May, that those restrictions will be coming. And those restrictions will effectively be diverting more than 3,000 HGVs per day away from the bridge. That's not a minor adjustment, that's a major shift in traffic flow with very real consequences for communities like mine in Chepstow. As the local councillor for Mount Pleasant, an area that includes the High Beach Roundabout and a designated air quality management area, I have real concerns about how this decision will impact my residents. Colleagues know only too well, and I'm an unapologetic broken record on this matter, the town is already experiencing significant congestion, which is pushing the limits of our infrastructure. So this will have an impact. So while the restriction might be necessary to protect the structural integrity of the bridge, sixty-year-old bridge, I absolutely understand the need to protect the longevity of the bridge. It shouldn't come at the cost of our communities without proper mitigation. I too, like Councillor Dimmock, would like to thank the Chair of the Public Services Scrutiny Committee, I can see Councillor Watts on screen, who called a special meeting on Monday, this last Monday, the 12th. And while we may sit on different sides of the chamber politically, I continue to work well with him as a local Chepstow member, I genuinely appreciate his leadership in creating the space for us as members to question national highways directly. I think my sort of summary of the meeting was that it probably raised more questions than answers, but it was a useful starting point. And it was clear that national highways are still undertaking traffic modelling work, and I hope that Welsh Government and Sutra will share the modelling data that they've just collected from the High Beach study with them, so they're not starting from scratch and they can collect that data pretty quickly. I also think the National Highways officers left under no illusion that we would continue to monitor developments and bring them back for further scrutiny, and rightly so. Because the impact is not just theoretical. If HGVs diverted through Chepstow on the A48, or travelled down the other section of the A48 through villages like Pulmerick and Caewent on to Meir, we will see greater congestion at our key pinch points along that stretch of road, and more pressure on residential streets, and likely knock-on effects to air quality and noise. And in terms of air quality, I don't need to quote the detailed air quality statistics of this chamber, I know the Air Quality Management Group meets twice a year, and they know what's at stake. There has been a lot of hard work undertaken in Chepstow over recent years to improve air quality. Much of that has been from local residents and businesses shifting to lower polluting vehicles, electric cars and hybrids, rather than a decrease in volume. I don't think that's happened, and we've seen an increase, I think, post-Covid. But they've also taken the opportunity to undertake modal shift and shift away from vehicles altogether, to undertake more active travel, and I think that's absolutely right. They have and continue to play their part, and it would be a huge step backwards if those gains are lost because our own network was left to absorb the impacts without investment or mitigation. The impact on air quality must be fully modelled, and as elected councillors, we must have access to that data on a more regular basis over this two-year period. If that is the case, I hear what the deputy leader said about urgency and persuading national highways to put in a mitigation solution at the earliest point of call. And I hope the administration will work with Welsh Government, because they obviously collect the data on the various measuring stations along A48 to ensure that happens. As I said, we meet as an air quality steering group, elected councillors join that group, but we only meet twice a year. So to understand the impact of these potential proposals, I think we need to ensure we get regular access to that data over the next eighteen months, two years. And that brings me to my final point, which is funding. We already know that the South Wales Trunk Road Agency, SUTRA, is struggling to find money to routinely maintain its road services on key stretches of its trunk road network, like the A48 and Newport Road in Hardwoodkill, or to replace key infrastructure like the barriers on the M48. I recently reported a number of potholes on the stretch of the A48 in my board with the erosion of road surfaces in a number of places as well. And whilst SUTRA acknowledged the problem and the concerns, they informed me that they had no money to do anything about it. So if National Highways is redirecting significant HGV traffic onto these roads, then it's only right that the Department of Transport passes appropriate funds down to Welsh Government and SUTRA to allow the essential upgrades and mitigations to take place. Chair, this is not just a Monmouthshire issue, it's a cross-border issue, it's a UK-wide challenge, and it requires UK-wide support. I do hope, as the deputy leader said, that there would be urgent action from Welsh Government. But I will say that it has dragged us heels in terms of improving High Beach Roundabout. It's had the Burns recommendations for the last five years, and it's done nothing in our area to progress those proposals. So, you know, I'm not positive in terms of Welsh Government action or urgent action in the short term. So Chair, I support this motion, and as a council, we must press all levels of government to ensure that our communities are not left carrying the weight, literally and figuratively, of the decisions made elsewhere, and we owe it to our residents to get this right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor. Next is Councillor Mayby.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I agree very much with everything that's been said, and I'm enjoying the consensus very much. I don't want to just repeat what people have said, but as a Cabinet Member who has responsibility for highways, I probably should say a couple of things, so I'll try and be concise. Absolutely support the motion, and I really just want to give you my commitment that we will continue to push, all of us who are involved, myself and officers, to work at pace to find a solution that reduces the impact, that mitigates the impact as much as possible on businesses and residents, and ensures that Wales, and South Wales in particular, is an attractive and viable business location for all, because this is our really big concern, isn't it? I'd wanted to just reassure you that officers are now in weekly dialogue with national highways, with Welsh Government, and with SUTRA about these concerns, so we're not being held at arm's length. Sometimes that initial involvement takes a bit of, that initial engagement takes a bit of pressure, but once it's there, it's there, and we won't let go of that. We will particularly bring forward all of the concerns that you've made, and I thought interesting comments from Councillor Pavia there about national highways' responsibility for the impact of what's happened, and the money that might come with that. The safety and short-term viability of the bridge, obviously, and the fact that that needs to stay open for 90% of traffic is a big priority, let's not forget that. But we will be continuing to push for a medium and long-term solution for the HGV traffic that needs to get to Chepstow, particularly to New House Farm. The closure of this bridge to HGVs really, as we all know, does further exacerbate problems that we were already facing in the area, and for which we have all been pushing for solutions for some time. And in particular, as already been mentioned, we are lobbying as hard as we can at all levels for fulfilment of the Burns prospectus to remedy the problems of congestion, including to make improvements to the rail network, including the new station at Meir, as already been mentioned. Let's not forget the bigger issue around modal shift and the intensity of pressure on the road networks. And to be honest, I think I've been really struck in this role by the total mismatch between the size and frequency of vehicles and our old roads and our villages and towns. And it's interesting, we're not seeing that only in our rural roads and in our ancient streets, but also on relatively modern infrastructure, you know, built in the 60s, and it just shows how severe the pressures have become, and have been allowed to become. And it's a fault of us as a society that we've let it go that far. So modal shift and sense around the way this is done, both for individual people wanting to travel and for freight, and the push for this road link, which is something that we understand at local level, but it's quite hard, I think, for those in SUTRA and Welsh Government to really get. We won't let go of that, the importance of making that link from the M48, so that people not least can access seven-tunnel junction and make that a really well-used station in the longer term, as the rail frequency meets our expectations, that we will also keep pushing for, without adding more traffic to the B4525, which we know none of us want. So the Cabinet and officers have been persistent on these matters, and we will continue to do so, and really, that's all I want to say, except, yeah, thank you for this motion, and we'll certainly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Councillor Watts, please.
Thank you, Chair. As my family just walked through the door, made lots of noise, the timing there is perfect. I just wanted to thank everybody for those kind comments about the Select Committee. The Select Committee will remain open. I did say in the Select Committee that we will come back and look at this and invite national highways back in six months. It may need a meeting before that, depends on what they come back with. I really am worried about the 27th. There's a lot of things I could say about it, but I think it's going to be a disaster. There's no planning, everybody's frightened, I think it's going to be really chaotic, and we should really, really worry about it. I've made the amendment that we would continue with the debate about the ANPR cameras, because obviously they're going to be implemented, but there could be amendments within that. So it's structured that some of the vehicles that would head towards New House Farm estate could then get some dispensation or some kind of recognition, through number plate recognition, then deliver to, obviously, that site and possibly bulwark, because that would alleviate the problem massively, wouldn't it? The other thing I really worry about is, it's not a sport that I'm particularly, you know, into myself, but we are local councillors and we have to protect, you know, all our businesses, is Chepstow Racecourse. What happens to them? I mean, we simply do not know, we haven't heard anything, we haven't asked them questions about it. So, you know, as someone that uses the bridge, probably, I don't know, I probably use it almost every day, I think, actually. You know, when there's a race meet, you see a lot of traffic coming, with a lot of people using those kind of lorries now, effectively they carry two or three horses on. So I worry about that. That wasn't really discussed. So I really worry about Chepstow Racecourse and the future of... So I really worry about Chepstow Racecourse and the future of that. So I just wanted to remind everybody of those concerns. But I'd like some kind of response from the cabinet member about whether or not we could continue with the dialogue about the ANPR cameras. Thank you.
Councillor Bondi there.
Sorry, you didn't have your mic on, Chair. Thank you very much, yes, please. Thank you, Chair. So I'd like to thank the Chair of Public Services for bringing it to scrutiny, the decision. Thank you very much for that. It allowed us all to share our views. I support the motion very much. We need a junction, particularly on the M48 between Caldegot and Roggett on the B4245. Also, we need, maybe this is an opportunity to think more sustainably and as Catherine Mayby said, have a modal shift towards using public transport, but also for the future, maybe going back towards rail freight as Seven Tunnel Junction was a centre of that in the past. And we need to get more vehicles off the roads anyway for our health and wellbeing. And we also need to work to resolve the increases that will result from this on the already significant congestion at High Beach and Maga. So fully support this, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Bond. And I have councillor McConnell.
Thank you, Chair. Early today, we heard group leaders extolling the need for us to work collaboratively across this chamber. This motion clearly has the support of the whole chamber and a lot of councillors actively involved in looking for solutions. So I propose that we go straight to the vote at this point.
Well, thank you. That's a proposal that we move to the vote. My understanding is that we have to vote on whether we move to the vote, but that takes place without discussion, so.
Chair, I object to that. We've got members of the South County need to speak. I want to speak, Catherine doesn't want to speak, I think.
Right. The standing order is that once the proposal to move for the vote has been suggested, that we do actually vote straight away on that proposal to have a vote. Right, we're not voting on the motion, we're voting on whether we should have a vote now. Sorry.
Chair, we might have to vote on the proposal prior to voting on the motion.
But that's what I'm saying, we are voting on whether we're going to vote now or vote next, if you see what I mean. But basically voting on whether we stop further discussion on this, yeah? Is that clear?
Yeah. Chair, if I may, is a point of clarification, and it's not after my chip in with a point of clarification because I know you'll tick me off, is that essentially there are questions, you know, I laid a question to, I put a question forward to the cabinet member, you know, hoping that I'd get some kind of response. If I'm wrong, you seem to be cutting it off.
Well, I take your point, but I am bound by the constitution, which I'm waiting to be contradicted on this, but I think I'm right that if there's a proposal that we move to the vote, we have to vote on that proposal. You can vote against the proposal to move to the vote, which will allow further discussion if you wish, yeah?
Can we have a recorded vote, Chair? If you're going to waste your time taking votes, maybe have a recorded vote and waste more time.
Can we do a recorded vote on a procedural motion?
Besides that, not carry on the debate. I think it's ridiculous.
What?
No.
Right, I'm informed, I do have a degree of discretion on this and I will therefore allow the debate to continue for a short while, but I would ask you to be as brief as you can and avoid repetition in your comments. Thank you. Meanwhile, I'll check the constitution again. We have councillor Eason.
Thank you, Chair. This information came my way from the English side two or three days before it was announced in Wales. That I find disappointing. I also find it disappointing that in Monmouthshire, we've got a transport working group and we should have been kept more informed of these actions by the Highways Authority in England because SUTRA didn't know about it. I support everything that Paul Pavia says about the modelling and not what, and I would question that we haven't been given the right information. This must have been going on for months and months before they came to the decision. Essentially, the Deccan and Abridge is 12,000 tonnes. It's strung on two piers of 3,000 tonnes each. If you take a 10-tonne lorry, a 12-tonne lorry across there, it's one thousandths of the weight of the bridge. So I don't believe we've been given the right sort of detail that we need to be given as Paul Pavia says, modelling and how it was being done. So I would like to see this taken further. The boat has gone now, we've got to get the boat back into port. But we've got a transfer working group in this county, that should be involved more directly and of course the Select Committee under Catherine Mayby. That's all I've got to say. I'm disappointed that we've been left in Wales again chasing the boat and we've now got to work the next 18 months or so to retrieve a situation which is going to cause chaos in Maga, chaos in parts of Caldegot. And I'm sorry, Lisa, Severnridge Industrial State is in Sevres now. Which is a bit, you can keep that bit then.
Councillor, you will get the right to reply, please. Thank you very much. Right, and, oh, I've lost my screen now as a result of all that. I think we had councillor Sandals next.
Diolcadaeth. I'll try and be brief. I support this motion, obviously, and to emphasise the urgent need for action at one of the most congested pinch points and it will only get worse when this limits on the weight, junction 23A at Maga. In particular, I want to highlight the case of signalising the roundabout at this junction. As traffic volumes increase, which they will do, once these weight limits come in, the roundabout becomes overwhelmed, often and usually leading to gridlock, not just on the motorway, but deep into our local communities. When the roundabout backs up, traffic spills onto the B4245 affecting villages and towns like Maga and De Roggett, Caldegot. Residents are increasingly trapped in long queues just trying to get to schoolwork or the shops. Emergency services and buses are delayed and the economic impact on local businesses, especially haulage firms, is growing. I will stop there because I know that I've probably repeated and other people will similarly say the same thing, but yeah, absolutely support this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, appreciate that. Councillor Louise Brown.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I wanted to reinforce the points that councillor Pavia has already made. I mean, the High Beach Roundabout is already a pinch point and already generates very long queues. Only the other day, there was a queue half past 10 in the morning and it went to the bottom of Palmerick Hill, A48, to the Mountain Brook Lodge. You know, it took half an hour to get on the roundabout and then the roundabout was stagnant as well and it was all caused by roadworks on the A48 just past the High Beach Roundabout where somebody was having some tree work done. And, you know, so basically it took a considerable time to get in and out and that applied not only from the Palmerick end, but obviously from the Gloucestershire end at the moment. And I mean, I would urge, I noted note that the amendment includes about this link, but I would hope that there would also be representation about actually improving the High Beach Roundabout so that mountain road land is actually used effectively to improve that roundabout, which is already needed because quite often without this additional pressure, you know, we're already in a gridlocked situation with regard to traffic congestion and very large heavy goods vehicles will only add to this. But I'm also concerned about the impact on the local roads. You know, for example, the A48 Palmerick is coming from, the High Beach Roundabout is very narrow in places and, you know, we're already asking for the saplings to be removed from there because of the fact that there's no pavement on one side of the road and street furniture actually gets knocked and you can see that just going along there. So it's also if, because we're a very rural county, I'm concerned about if HGV, very heavy vehicles, go down side routes to avoid congestion, then that'll be along country roads and it could well actually damage the roads and damage the verges, particularly if they go along one-track roads that have only passing places. And I know, you know, I know an example in my ward in particular where a country road was used by a vehicle that was too heavy for that road and it damaged the side of the road and it damaged the vegetation. So as I explained in the Public Services meeting, there are two financial implications, the implications of improving the main cables, but also the impact on our local Monmouthshire road network and any potential damage to roads. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. And councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak as junction 23A actually falls in the ward I represent. And whilst there is a discussion and an amendment, personally, my amendment would not have been to prioritise road, it would have been to prioritise rail because modal shift is absolutely critical. It takes so long to develop road schemes that I fear that that is potentially a very long way into the future. However, council will recall that the issue, and this is my frustration, the seven tolls was a big, on both sides of the political spectrum, a big issue cast as a vote winner in the 2017 election. I think I was the only person to stand in this chamber and say, I don't agree that we should remove the tolls from the four completely. I feel we should reduce the toll, but we should have a minimal toll, which means that we can pay for bridge repairs and maintenance and also to create a public transport levy because we cannot continue making the mistakes of the past and there would be unintended consequences. Now, we heard in our discussion with National Highways that there has been a 34% increase in traffic. That is to be expected. It's a consequence of removing the tolls. There are many other unintended consequences, Chair, which I won't go into because I know you're keen to keep the debate brief. However, this could have been foreseen and now we're in a situation where there is a lack of planning, a lack of thought about what the right thing is to do. I don't understand and I have requested signalisation and better signage around junction 23A and Maga and Endy and from the Newport side previously, long, long time ago, because when the bridges have any restrictions, which I know aren't every day, but when they're closed because of high winds or when there's works on them, as councillor Sandals has said, that brings the communities where we live to a standstill and that has impacts for everyone. Now, I appreciate that people want to see some rapid action, but I fear the real issue here is a lack of foresight, a lack of planning. And I'm sorry to say that I don't know what is entailed with constructing a whole new junction, but I personally would like to be far more sighted on that before I say, yes, that's a great idea. What I want to see is us bringing forward the train improvements, the new stations on the main line. To be fair, we've had these Burns delivery recommendations since 2021. Personally, and unless anyone can tell me, I haven't seen a single one looking like it's going to be delivered. And when we talk about the fact that there's no money, this is a national government issue, let's be clear, but also if we'd have been thinking further ahead and created some kind of public transport levy, maybe we wouldn't have such a lack of funding to deal with what is an ongoing repair and maintenance issue for a structure which was always going to come to a position where there were potential dangers. So I fear that by having, you know, knee-jerk reactions, what we do is we just save up more problems for ourselves into the future. So I thank councillor Dimmock for bringing this to our attention and I thank all members, cabinet member and others who've spoken and councillor Griffiths for saying they continue to lobby, but I'm afraid we need to see deeds, not words. We need to see the station at Maga in particular brought forward. We need to see modal shift prioritised over roads because all roads are going to do is just create jam today and jam tomorrow because eventually they will become full and then what do we do? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. I don't see any other hands, so councillor Dimmock, would you like to exercise your right to reply?
Yeah, I won't take long, Chair, because I think everyone's covered absolutely everything perfectly and I really appreciate John's amendment. It does strengthen the motion and it would definitely mitigate the impact on Maga and the M4. I am concerned for these hauliers though, we know they are working within very small margins. They shared that with us when we met with the Road Haulage Association and if there's an unplanned closure, it's a difference between making money and losing a huge amount of money going around that diversion. I did say during Monday's meeting that the dispensation with regards to drivers' hours needs to be looked at because when they were, there was the closure in Hollyhead, DFT relaxed legislation around drivers' hours and I think we do need to look at that, although we don't want to see lorries pulled up either side of the bridge. That will have a negative impact on our local communities, so we've got to work together on this and ensure that we're representing our residents and their communities, but also we've got to support these hauliers to keep them trucking and keep this country moving. That is vitally important, especially into Wales. So thank you for your support, I do appreciate it and I know they will as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Right, we'll now move to a vote on motion 11A. I'm having trouble here. Yeah, 10A is it? Right, how are we doing? Last chance, don't forget to press submit. Five not voted. Okay, that's very clearly passed, I think I can say unanimous, no formal abstentions or none against, so that's passed unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Before we take a break, we're in a position now to get a ruling on item eight, the committees. I think Paul Matthews is going to give a ruling, yeah? I think Paul Matthews is actually going to talk to us and give a ruling. Thank you. Paul?
Thanks, Chair. At least if anything, it's proof that I am paying attention in the cheap seats at the back. Can I start by apologising to council for the confusion caused by this item? It was unnecessary and it forced the officers actually to resolve it. There are three things in play. You have the report in front of you, which is accurate. We have our constitution, which is inaccurate in terms of the requirement that the Local Government Wales Measure 2011 places on us. So the report is fine, but as I go through what I'm about to share with you, I have suggested way forward, which I think will allow us to proceed today, okay? For the interests of clarity, I will read out to you what I believe to be the salient passages from the Local Government Wales Measure 2011. They are short, but I think it answers the question in front of us very, very clearly. They are short, but I think it answers the question in front of us very, very clearly. Paragraph 312, I actually think councillor John might have put this in the chat bar somewhere, but I'll read it anyway. Paragraph 312, "The council must also appoint a chair of the Democratic Services Committee who must not be a member of any of the political groups, key word, represented in the executive." Clearly, the group, which consists of councillor Chandler and Howells, have a representative in the executive. Section 75 of the same measure goes on. It defines an executive group as a political group, some or all of whose members comprise or are included in the executive of the authority. There is a consistency between those two paragraphs, which make it clear that in the debates so far, I do not believe that councillor Howells is an appropriate nominee to sit as chair of the Democratic Services Committee. But the error here is on the part of officers, let me be clear on that, and we need to update our constitution so that it does read in accordance with the provision within the Local Government Measure. Is that clear so far? Because if it is, I have a recommendation in terms of how you proceed.
Yes, please proceed, Paul.
Okay. Now, clearly, as a council, you cannot act outside of your constitution and currently I am telling you that your constitution is inaccurate. I am suggesting that you move a motion now, which, and I will read a suggested motion to you, which I haven't typed into the chat bar. This council agrees to set aside paragraph 1033 of our constitution and elect a chair of Democratic Services Committee in accordance with the provisions of the Local Government Wales Measure 2011 as set out in paragraph 32 therein. If you are comfortable to consider that motion, and indeed if you agree with that motion, you are then able to return to the report as drafted and seek nominations for the position. And I think I've been very clear why I think councillor Howells would not qualify as a nominee and I believe councillor Howells will accept that position.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to need a councillor to move that motion. Councillor John, oh, I've got plenty of them, we'll take councillor John and seconding, yeah, councillor Murphy? Okay, there, right. Any discussion? Do you want to speak to it or do you want to allow us to go to a vote?
Move, Chair.
I've got a question, Sir Chair. I do apologise, I've got a question, which would be, this effectively now means, and I've never, obviously Paul knows we've never had this before, this gives an opportunity then going forward for anybody at some stage to technically adjust our constitution at any future meeting, surely?
Would you like me to respond, Chair?
Yes, please.
It's always your constitution and you've always had the capability of setting aside the constitution as part of your meeting. It's something that you will do with great thought and great care, but your rules are your rules. So that provision has always been there for you and if you would like me, subsequent to the meeting, to sort of drop you all a note in that regard, I'm happy to do so. Would it be helpful if I typed that suggested motion into the chat bar or are you sufficiently happy with the flavour of it?
I think we're pretty well aware of it. Councillor Taylor, did you want to speak?
I was just going to clarify, Chair, we're not actually changing the constitution, we are setting that particular paragraph aside. Just thought, thank you.
Yes, I would assume we'd be receiving some more information about that in a future meeting as we work on that particular clause. Right, any more comments? Councillor John, you have a right to reply if you want it.
Just to say, I accept the chief executive's ruling, but I will say, while officers draft reports, reports then go to cabinet members to present. So cabinet members do have a responsibility to ensure that reports that they present to the chamber are correct, so issues like this could have been resolved earlier.
Right, thank you, thank you. Right, we're going to move to a vote shortly and my understanding then is if this motion is carried, we will then retake nominations for chair of Democratic Services and vote on any nominations that come forward. Paul, will you confirm that's the case?
That's correct.
Thank you. Right, we move to the vote then on the motion to set aside that clause in the constitution.
Right, if you take your seats please, take your seats. Just checking who's at home. councillor Garrick, are you there? Councillor Garrick? And I've got councillor Watts, he's having a nice sweet... Keep the camera on, we'll just have to watch you eating your bonbons. Yeah, only one at a time though, please councillor Watts. Right, I think I've got, I haven't got councillor Garrick though. Right, have we got everybody in the room? Oh, she's in the room, is she? No, that's Garrick. Okay, well it's well past the time, yep. So I'm going to reconvene the meeting and it's item 10b, motion from councillor Taylor. Do we have a second for that motion? Yes, from councillor Howarth. Right, councillor Taylor.
Thank you Chair. So I've brought this motion because, I mean, I don't know if, how many members know a great deal about direct payments, it wasn't something I know a great deal about, I confess, until I've been approached by some residents. But for those who don't know a great deal about it, direct payments allow you to receive cash payments from your local authority instead of care services. This can give people with an assessed need, and I make that point very deliberately, much more flexibility and greater control over their support. The provision of direct payments is underpinned by the Social Services and Wellbeing Act 2014 and it quite clearly suggests that the use of direct payments is part of those four key principles that underpin the act, and I won't go into them all but you, those, some of you will know them well, voice and control, prevention, wellbeing and co-production. According to the Social Services and Wellbeing Act, social, local authorities, and it's not a can or a should or a, it's a must, consider direct payments as an integral part of meeting people's needs through care and support planning and must not regard them as separate or secondary consideration. Essentially, unless a person is excluded, and there are some exclusions I won't go into the detail of, it is a right. We are all aware that there is a great deal of stress in the social care system. We are all aware that there are people sometimes waiting quite long periods of time for social work assessments. I personally have had a number of residents in touch with me who are receiving care but perhaps have no defined person essentially coordinating their personal care. They do not have an assigned social worker and whilst this may not be problematic in itself, it does seem to be an issue in respect of direct payments. We also know that in the new approach where we perhaps have people being supported by an integrated care team or by a re-ablement team, where people are provided with an initial package and we know that there's a multidisciplinary team around it, and although a social worker can be called on, it's not necessary at the first port of call. And we know that there are, as I mentioned, very long waits sometimes for social work assessments. I think at the last council or a council before I was talking about someone who had waited seven months for a social work assessment. I am also aware that we have a very, very small but extremely experienced and knowledgeable direct payment team. However, my concern councillors is that people aren't able to reach them sometimes because they are being advised that they need a referral from a social worker. Now, as I've just mentioned, there may be people who don't have a specific assigned social worker even though they have an assessed care need. And my concern is that we are creating potentially a bottleneck or a funnel which prevents people from accessing all of the information that could help them with their choice, the choices that they're able to make about their care and support. I've also been made aware by people far more knowledgeable than I that Monmashur perhaps unlike other local authorities has not always put the perhaps infrastructure around ensuring that people can access direct payments. So I think it's something that we ought to be aware of and bring to our attention, particularly given this council's commitment to older people, not that direct payments is just a matter for older people, in fact absolutely not, it's a matter for anyone and everyone with an assessed care need. But again, as I mentioned, I've, my concern is that because we have new processes and potentially new practices, that we have barriers in the system which may have been appropriate when almost everybody was assessed by a social worker but may not match our current experience of what social care looks like in our county. How can we as elected members be assured that these new processes and practices do not present an unintended barrier to those who might benefit from the flexibility and choice that a direct payment could bring? How can we be assured that our council is not imposing any unnecessary barriers or hoops to jump through, possibly unintentionally? Referral requirements are simply not reasonable to have perhaps a social work referral because not everybody is in that position. So council, I wanted to bring this to attention because my concern is, is that we do create conditions which means that everybody who would wish to have a conversation, and bear in mind this shouldn't be secondary, is able to. And whilst I do appreciate that there are constraints on our, on the whole social care system and we have increasing numbers of people seeking to, with social care support, I don't think that we need to be imposing any barriers that are not present in the act. And don't forget, it's a must, not a should. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Is councillor Dimmer, is it?
Yes, thank you Chair and thank you councillor Taylor for bringing this motion to council today. I think we all agree that direct payments represent freedom of choice. They allow individuals who meet eligibility criteria to design care packages that suit their personal needs and preferences, whether it is choosing a trusted carer, arranging flexible support or managing services in a way that fits their lifestyle. Direct payments place people in control of their own care. We need to ensure that these, those, sorry, eligible can access it in practice with the right information, guidance and timely support. Unfortunately, too often we do hear that individuals and families who face delays, confusion or unnecessary barriers when seeking to use direct payments. This undermines the very principle of choice and independence that the system is built upon. And I believe that supporting this motion is a clear statement of our council's commitment. It affirms that we will stand by those who need our support and it also sends a message to our communities that we believe in your right to live life on your terms and we will support you in making that happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bondes please.
Thank you Chair. I support this motion very strongly and there's particularly with regard to the concerns regarding the imminent changes to domiciliary care in the south of the county in Caldercot. These changes are causing significant distress and anxiety to vulnerable residents and their families. The assessments by social workers and integrated services teams are seriously delayed. Some residents don't even know that direct parent payments are available and that's an option, whether it's their own capability or whatever, but that's what I've been told by talking to them and more are worrying needlessly waiting to know what is happening. I've had a response from the officers but there's the worry and the distress is still there, although, although there is a plan and I know it's been delayed because the contracts haven't been signed but still people are distressed. The plan is to, the plan was to have social workers support our most vulnerable people in our society and our county through this change, this significant change. And unfortunately, as we all know, that we haven't got enough social workers, so they are left floundering and very upset and very distressed. Please, please, can we do something about this?
Thank you councillor. I was trying to work out who J S was, it's councillor Jackie Strong.
Chair, does that mean you're actually inviting me to speak? I'll take that as a yes. Okay, I just, I want to also thank councillor Taylor for bringing this motion to council this afternoon. As, as maybe most of the people in the chamber will know, I've been a social worker since, well, before I retired for a number of years and a very sort of positive promoter of direct payments. And I was just telling councillor Taylor in the break that I probably wiped out the direct payments budget in Newport for a family some years ago because we had a disabled child that I could see that there was a need and we used it. So over many, many years I've promoted direct payments. Most of you will not have, have been involved in assessing some of our citizens for, for social care or care and support, but I have. You know, I, during my time as a social worker in an integrated team in the middle of Monmashur, we also went through a different, a difficult tendering process and as a result, we had a real increase in the take-up of direct payments because people could see that it was a way of having real control over who was coming up to their door, providing intimate care and actually providing a choice to those, those families and those individuals. So I really sort of promote direct payments. I, I would like to understand if there is a sort of, you know, bottleneck, where that might be. But as part of that assessment process, you know, as a, as a worker you'd go in, you'd look at care needs but you'd also look at the situation around the family, you'd talk about, you know, carers' assessments and promote direct payments. And I know that happened back then and I'm sure it happens now. So it's about us as a council really promoting direct payments as an option for all our citizens that need social care. I know that we've had discussions on some of the scrutiny meetings about people on very high care needs that tip over into continuing healthcare that then want to keep their direct payments and there's been that legal issue about, because it then goes over to health rather than social services. But I really welcome councillor Taylor's motion to council, I really fully support it and I think we should do our utmost to bring to the attention all those that have social care needs, the option of a direct payments. I know our cabinet member for Health and Social Care, councillor Chandler will also want to speak in a minute and I know that he's really fully behind this motion as well. So thank you and thank you for your time.
Thank you councillor and councillor Portavio please.
Yeah, thank you Chair, I'm not going to make a long contribution, I'd just obviously thank councillor Taylor for bringing the motion forward. Just touching on really on what councillor Jackie Strong said there and I suppose the implications of the Health and Social Care Wales Act in relation to direct payments, in relation to continuing healthcare but also aftercare and the Mental Health Act. Just to understand really from the cabinet member in terms of their contribution, have we, have we understood the implications in relation to transition management and coordination between local health boards and, and local authorities in relation to that transition from direct payments for those who will potentially move over to C H C? And any workforce considerations as well? So if he could possibly, sorry, if they could possibly address that in their contribution, that would be really helpful. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor, councillor Chandler.
Yeah, thank you Chair and thank you councillor Taylor for bringing the motion. I wanted to hear a bit of the debate before I came in. And, you know, as councillor Strong said, I'm happy to support this motion and, but I understand that some members here may see the motion as a bit of a superfluous waste of their time as the council already willingly and effectively complies with the legislation on direct payments. But nevertheless, I think this is an opportunity for us to reaffirm that commitment. But it might be useful for me to provide some context, particularly in the light of some of the comments that were made in, in the earlier speeches. We do routinely advise people of their rights around accessing direct payments and we currently provide direct payments to 120 people who have an assessed eligible need. The typical process that we follow in this is that social care needs assessments undertaken, they will identify if the eligible needs could be met by a direct payment and if the person needing care agrees or if they just request it, they will be referred to a visit from an independent living adviser and that both the social work assessment and the subsequent independent living adviser visit provides the person needing care with information and advice on how to become the employer, how to manage the financial and employment legislation and other processes that sit around the responsibilities of managing a direct payment. And this provides the opportunity for both the recipient and the council to consider whether this is the most suitable option, you know, the best option for them. And, you know, this is a clear example of co-production as set out in the act. I do want to emphasise, there are no bottlenecks in the independent living adviser assessment process. You know, if somebody requests that, that happens pretty immediately and there are no bottlenecks in that process. And of course, all care and support plans are reviewed regularly and the option of direct payments can be revisited at any time when somebody is receiving, you know, in receipt of a care and support plan. If that direct payment route is agreed and the person wants to take on that responsibility, then the recipient, the person receiving the care then is responsible for commissioning the care and they might do that through employing a person assistant or contracting with a micro carer or in some cases contracting with a care agency. There are pros and cons for people doing this. Clearly, you know, as people have already said, direct payments represent a very positive and empowering way of managing their own care and support. of managing their own care and support. But they're not right for everybody. The pros for them are that it gives them choice, control and flexibility, as people have said, as councillor Dimick, for example, was very eloquent in saying. But the cons are, and there are cons, is that the individual becomes the employer. This is cons for the person receiving care, not cons for the council. Cons for the person receiving care is that individual becomes the employer and they will need to comply with financial and employment legislation. The cared-for person will need to have the mental capacity to manage this or they would need to be a suitable person to manage it on their behalf. There can be safeguarding risks and there are also challenges for people receiving care in finding appropriate carers. Although I would say our work in establishing and recruiting micro carers has helped with this recently. We still even, somebody receiving a direct payment, the local authority must still provide a level of oversight to ensure that the arrangements being made do meet those eligible care needs of the person. So I think people can be reassured that actually we not just comply by the letter of the law, we comply willingly and we encourage the uptake of direct payments and we put measures in place to facilitate that and to help people with that process of managing the payment as well. Because it was, in the debate came up from councillor Bond about those affected by the current domiciliary care tendering process in the south of the county, I just want to clarify a little bit on that. We have reiterated to people affected by this that a direct payment is an option for them. And so far, 11 people have come forward to ask to explore that option with us. And our response has been governed according to the timeline of the tender process, not all of which has been in our control. And we're about to start the formal transition phase now. And the first step of this is to undertake joint visits for those people who have indicated they wish to change the way they receive their care or exploring direct payments. And we anticipate doing that next week. The visits will be used to explore personal outcomes, what matters to people, what are the available options, as well as advice and guidance around those direct payments. I have to emphasise that each case has its own specific context and circumstances. But the objective is to support people to get the best option for them and that's what we're trying hard to do. But in the meantime, we'll be supporting and facilitating both the outgoing and the incoming care organisations to effect smooth handovers for those people who don't want to fundamentally change the way that their care is received. So I hope council is reassured by the situation and the efforts that we're making and that we are really working hard and encouraging in supporting people to get the best care possible for them, including direct payments if possible. So I support this motion because it reiterates our existing policy. So thank you.
Thank you councillor. I can see councillor Bond, you've got your hand up, but you've already spoken in this debate and you can only speak once. Okay, so.
Can I respond to something Sir Tony has just said?
No.
Discrepancy. I need to get in contact with him in the names of the people who are disagreeing with what he's just said. Thank you.
Right. I don't see any other hands. So we'll give councillor Taylor the right to reply.
Thank you Chair and I'll be brief. So it's really good to hear that there's support for this motion and obviously very positive to hear councillor Chandler expressing that the council is putting in place measures to ensure, or has measures and is putting in place further measures to ensure that anyone who wants to explore the option of a direct payment has access to appropriate information, support and guidance. And I think we all completely understand the point that councillor Chandler makes, that it isn't for everyone, but it is an option. You know, it is something to be discussed and considered. And I'm glad that no one perceived that this was a waste of time or a waste of their airtime in council because actually I think it is an important matter. Because I probably have said this several times, I think the measure of any organisation is how it treats its people with the highest level of vulnerability. And if we are talking about people with assessed care needs, then often we are talking about people sometimes who have a degree of vulnerability. So thank you Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to debate this topic.
Thank you councillor. We can now move to a vote on item 10 B. Well, that is very clearly past 45, which is as close to full house as I think we ever get. So well done everybody. Right, we can, I'll just say, a very good debate and discussion on that, even though we agreed there was some really useful learning taking place there. Right, we move on then to members' questions. I've had a request from councillor Callard, agreed by councillor John, but question number four will be taken first. Yep, so councillor John.
Thank you very much Chair. How many households in Monmouthshire have secured a council tax exemption since 2022? Thank you for the question councillor John. We don't have a rolling total on our system of awards made. So what we've done to provide you with the figures is we've looked at the specific number of exemptions at a point in time. And for these figures, it's been the 31st of March in each of the years. So I'll provide some context as well. So in 2022, against 43,881 council tax accounts, we had 1,080 exemptions. In 2023, against 43,682 council tax accounts, we had 1,307 exemptions. In 2024, against 44,007 council tax accounts, we had 1,142 exemptions. And in 2025, the 31st of March, we had 44,294 council tax accounts and 1,105 council tax exemptions. And just to give you some context on that, that ranges from 2.46% of our council tax accounts to a high of 2.98% for council tax exemptions. And these exemptions include such things as, one moment, apologies, those who are severely mentally impaired, care leavers, empty and unfinished properties and those properties undergoing structural repair. Thank you.
Thank you supplementary.
Yeah, thank you for the answer. Councillor McKenna and I have been supporting a family who now live near Trelick, who purchased a property at the end of 2023. And because they were farming elsewhere at the time, they applied for a council tax exemption for six months while the property was being decorated. But they were advised that they couldn't have a council tax exemption because a previous owner of the property had previously applied for a council tax exemption and used up that six months. So we understand that the council doesn't have any discretion in this area. But it does seem really unfair that someone can't apply for a council tax exemption based on the fact that it's been used by a previous owner and sometimes quite some time in the past. So councillor McKenna and I wrote to Mark Drakeford about this and said we felt it was really unfair. And I was wondering whether this is something you can raise in discussions that you have with colleagues at the WLGA level but perhaps also when you have discussions with Welsh government ministers about the future of council tax. Because it does seem extremely unfair that some people in genuine circumstances can't access this exemption. Thank you.
Thank you councillor John. Obviously, I don't know this particular case, but if you want to forward over some information to me, I'll happily look into it for you.
Right, thank you. We'll move on to what is on the agenda as 12A, which is from councillor Howard.
Thank you Chair. As question cut to the cabinet member. Thank you.
I believe this one is for me.
Yep.
Yeah. Do you want to read it or shall I? I think you'd better read it councillor Howard because I don't quite follow the grammar. Thanks.
Well, I get it up on my computer there. Would the cabinet member on behalf of this council give a full explanation as to the erection of a 78-foot galvanised industrial fence on Porthie Kiln Road Mountain without any prior consultation, any contact with myself or the leader of this council? I did put this as an urgent question to the previous chair, which it was refused. So I have now submitted the question to this council for the cabinet member to respond. And I'd like a full response and a full apology from this council to the people of Clidagh and the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Officers are consulting with residents on options for reducing the visibility of the fence on Kiln Road, Porthie. I understand that 17 residents made contact with the council following public meeting. They've been contacted and asked to share potential solutions with the wider community. The fence is there, of course, to ensure that no one is standing on the road should another collapse of the rock face happen. There is quite simply a danger to life if the road is left open. An estimated 3,400 tonnes collapsed from the rock face, leaving the road edge without a barrier fence and precariously close to the quarry face. The road is sat within the zone of influence of potential rock falls below the substructure of the road and could undermine a large proportion of the width of the road. So it is extremely dangerous. The rock face is being surveyed at the end of May and the scoping exercise for moving the road is ongoing. If that is a potential solution, which doesn't seem incredibly likely, but it is being looked at. Given initial cost estimates, you know, it doesn't seem that that's a likely thing that could be done if you look at current budget pressures from facing highway maintenance across the county. It should be noted that previous attempts to restrict access to this dangerous area, including gates, concrete barriers, signage and here as fencing, have all been vandalised, presumably to allow vehicle access, which is why such a substantial fence had to be put up, really to protect anybody who might unexpectedly come along and find this open and think that it was safe. We have to put personal safety above everything else. One gate was indeed repaired and replaced three times prior to it being driven over and completely destroyed. The safety of visitors and residents was and still remains a priority and the deterioration of this road owing to its proximity to the quarry below has been the subject of exchange between the council and the local community over an extended period. I have been up there myself in previous times. So it's not been something that hasn't been discussed at all. Having said that, we of course recognise the frustration caused to residents in Llanelli Hill and Cledoc because they don't like the appearance of the temporary fence that was thrown up. And we're looking to, working with them as close as possible to find a solution that reduces the visibility of that fence but ensures safety for all. I believe that the head of service has already apologised in public, at the public meeting, for the lack of prior communication on putting up this fence with members, representatives and wider community and the installation of that new fence.
10 seconds please.
We all recognise the pressures that officers are under with reduced staffing levels and increased workload. There is general consensus that the fence on a closed section of highway is unsightly but was a response to ensure safety for everyone.
Could you wrap up now please councillor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Right, supplementary councillor Howard.
Yes, thank you Chair and I'm really, really disappointed on what, two points. One, she can't understand the question, the cabinet member, and secondly, she will not apologise. I will not be thrown under a bus and none of us here should.
It's a supplementary question please. Thank you.
The one is I haven't had an apology and the people of my community haven't had an apology. That's my supplementary to the cabinet member.
Is it a question?
It is, yes. Are we having an apology? Thank you.
As I've explained, this was not a political decision. This was an officer decision which was necessary. And the officer has apologised for not consulting before doing that and will do everything they can to remedy the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. So move on to the next question, 12B, again from councillor Howard.
Thank you Chair and as the question is, I do hope the cabinet member can understand it is in quite simple English. We as an authority chair have a great respect for our volunteers out there and let me thank them today from this floor. Many hundreds of them spend hours tidying our county, collecting litter through whatever reason it's put on the Carriageway or on our verges, everywhere. And we'll all acknowledge that. If we don't, we're going around blinkered. Could the cabinet member just explain to this council chamber what we do reference to waste bins within our county? Because I'm appalled at what has been going on over the last probably six months with the removal of waste bins. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor maybe again.
That wasn't actually the question that was tabled. The question that was tabled, if I read it out.
It was on the paper.
Was, does the cabinet member believe that litter bins in our towns and villages, also highways, play an integrated part in keeping our communities clean, tidy and most importantly by example? I'll answer that question. I think you're asking, do I think that litter bins matter? Of course I do. Litter bins do need to be in the right place to be effective. And I myself am a litter picker, so I totally appreciate the more than 400 litter picking volunteers that we have across the county. I'm not sure what else you're asking me. Thank you.
Chairman, could I ask then, why is it litter bins are being removed without members being informed, without the public being informed, without local councils, community councils being informed? They are being removed and not replaced. They are being removed and kept from our communities. And I'd like a full explanation of why that is happening and that goes back to my question, chairman. I want a full explanation why they're being removed and not replaced. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councillor maybe.
I'm not aware of having instructed litter bins to be removed. I am aware of, I believe, of one in your community that was actually removed by a resident. But that's the only one that I know about. But if you have any specific examples of litter bins that you want replaced, then do please let us know. Thank you.
Right, thank you. But now question 12C from councillor Marion Howells to cabinet member of planning a group development.
Thank you Chair. Could the cabinet member provide an update on the progress of any findings of the recent countywide parking review? In particular to ask where there is a genuine concern in my joint council world of Llanbadaug and Asc from businesses, residents, surrounding villagers and town commuters. Could you please advise on the current status, any proposed changes and the expected timeline for the conclusions of the review to be published? Thank you.
Councillor Griffiths, is it? Yep.
I thank councillor Howells for the question. I have now received a draft report from the consultants who have been undertaking the parking review and I look forward to publishing soon that final report. I am aware of the interest shown by Asc and Llanbadaug residents on this review. Councillor Howells and councillor Keir have been prominent in making sure I understand that interest. The review has been countywide. I can tell council now that it makes no recommendations for changes in those towns which currently have no parking charges. Those towns include Asc, Caldercot, Mager and Raglan. Instead, it recommends that we undertake town by town engagement with businesses, residents, town councils to test the case for any further change. I look forward to working with councillors in Llanbadaug and Asc to consider how this engagement may be conducted.
Thank you. Councillor Howells, supplementary?
Thank you Chair. Thank you, Delch councillor Griffiths. This is very good news for the people of Asc. Last year, on behalf of the Astoun council, I conducted a survey that received over 1,600 responses. 93% in favour of retaining.
thousand six hundred responses, ninety-three per cent in favour of retaining free car parking in Asc. For a small town of just over two thousand six hundred people, this level of response only goes to show the amount of concern in the town. This is indeed good news that I will be pleased to take back to our residents, the businesses, surrounding villagers and the town workers. I hope the outcomes of the review will be made available to elected members. Parking enforcement is an issue that is frequently raised by many of our residents. Did the review make suggestions on how we can improve our traffic enforcement?
Sorry. Members will be aware that the responsibility for enforcement was transferred from the police to local authorities in the recent past, but with no increase in funding. This has created challenges, and we've had challenges in recruiting and retaining a full team of officers to undertake enforcement. Action is being taken, and all of us will be monitoring the performance which follows from that action. Asc residents in particular will note the challenge of funding enforcement when there is no revenue stream from parking charges.
Thank you. We move on to question twelve E from councillor Thomas Davis, and I understand this one will be answered by councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you, Chair. To ask the leader to respond to the UK government's decision to withdraw funding for the Western Gateway partnership.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Just to clarify for the public as well as councillors, strategic external partnerships is within my portfolio as leader, and that is why I'm taking this question and not the cabinet member for resources. Also, for background information, the UK government announced in the October twenty twenty-four budget its intention to withdraw core funding for pan-regional partnerships, including the Western Gateway partnership, at the end of the financial year in March twenty twenty-five. That decision was confirmed by Minister Jim McMahon in a letter to the Chair of the Western Gateway partnership that was dated on March the thirteenth, and this is the situation that councillor Thomas is referring to. Monmashia is not directly invested in or engages with the Western Gateway partnership. I have sat on the board since twenty twenty-three as a representative of Cardiff Capital Region, and funding to support the Western Gateway goes through Cardiff Capital Region. The board met for the last time on Tuesday of this week. While this decision can be seen as disappointing, it has actually not affected the commitment of local authorities or ourselves and regional bodies on both sides of the border to continue to work together and pursue joint ventures which benefit all our citizens and businesses. Notably, the recommendations of the Seven Estrie Commission, which was hosted by the Western Gateway and delivered its recommendations back also in March to harness the tidal power of the Seven, are being taken forward jointly by CCR and the West of England Combined Authorities, WECO. As we speak, a memorandum of understanding is being drafted to formalise partnership between WECO and CCR focused on our shared interests to improve transport links, capitalise on opportunities to promote greener, sustainable growth across our regions, and I am meeting with WECO's newly-elected Chair, Mayor, next year to take this conversation forward. I have already written in my capacity as leader of Monmashia to the Mayor of the new Mayor of WECO, and we are continuing to work with, as we have done in the past, the Forest of Dean, Gloucestershire, on shared interests around transport, housing and infrastructure.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
I thank the leader for those remarks, particularly in relation to WECO, but given the UK government's abrupt withdrawal of funding for this important project, mere weeks, colleagues, after her own Member of Parliament was trumpeting her own participation in the launch of a new all-party parliamentary group to champion the Western Gateway partnership, can the leader reassure this chamber that she will use her office to hold her Labour Government colleagues at Westminster to account and to ensure that the UK government's devolution and growth agenda benefits the whole of the UK and doesn't abruptly stop at the Seven Bridge? And as she's alluded to, considering the immense economic opportunities demonstrated by cross-border collaboration, we've heard much about the Marches partnership, which I wholeheartedly endorse, what further steps can she take to advocate for further and deeper cross-border economic partnership which benefits the residents of Monmashia? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thomas Davis. It's good to know that we agree on this. As leader of Monmashia, I am absolutely committed to ensuring that regional growth and our own growth is linked to the industrial strategy of the UK government and of our own Welsh government. I have already spoken with the Welsh Office. I have been up to Westminster to talk not just to our NP. Obviously, I talked in the constituency as well, but on this matter of regional growth, I have appeared before the Select Committee in the Commons on science, technology and innovation, about the need for cross-border partnership and the work that we are doing through CCR. I have secured a meeting with the Welsh Secretary in the next two weeks, and I am also securing a meeting with the Welsh Government to talk through how we, as a region, which you know I chair, but also as a council, can contribute and benefit from the growth agenda of both governments and our work on an industrial strategy to improve not just business growth but also develop skills, innovations, which is helping our own council. So you can rest assured, councillor Thomas, councillor Davis, sorry, I just want to call you Thomas, you can rest assured that I am working as hard as I can, and you will note there is a members' seminar coming up to report on those partnerships where we can discuss in more detail what's going on. And thank you very much for asking that question.
Thank you, councillor. Question twelve F has been withdrawn because it more or less duplicates an earlier question. So we move on to twelve G from councillor Dimmock.
I thought I was loud enough. Obviously, you want me to be louder. Chair, I just want to say I'm really pleased that the charity you're supporting is Little Troopers. They're an amazing charity, offering support to military children who face unique challenges, so I really support that. And I'm delighted to hear that Monmashia council will be hosting the Welsh Armed Forces Day. It provides an opportunity for us all to show our appreciation to those that have served and currently serving, and I was just wondering if I can have an update on the Armed Forces event being hosted at Caldiot Castle, including any details about the schedule, participation and public engagement and access? Thank you.
Councillor Sandals?
Diolch. Thanks, councillor Dimmock. That's a fantastic question, which gives me the opportunity now to promote and showcase this incredible event. So I'm going to have to talk really fast, probably. Monmashia's got a long and proud association, obviously, with our armed forces. On Saturday, the twenty-eighth of June, we will host Wales National Armed Forces Day. This gives us the opportunity to show support for the men and women who make up the armed forces community, from currently serving personnel, including reservists, to service families, cadets and veterans. This is a free event at Caldiot Castle. It's open to the whole community, but capacity is limited, and people will need to book their free ticket in advance. Just over half of the five thousand tickets have gone now. With less than six weeks to go, we expect this event to be a fantastic sell-out. The site opens at eleven AM and the event runs to four PM, but I'd encourage everybody to arrive early and experience the buzz in the town beforehand. We've been working really closely with the Army, Air Force and Navy to pull together a definitive list of assets for the day. These include the Ajax tank, a display by the RAF Falcons, the UK's, which is the UK's premier parachute display team, and the band of the RAF regiment. Just this week, it's been confirmed that we expect a flypast from a Spitfire. This is part of the Royal Air Force Battle of Britain memorial flight and couldn't be more timely as we approach the eighty-fifth anniversary of the Battle of Britain. We've been liaising with the Third Sector and charity networks to ensure we have all the relevant organisations represented, such as Royal British Legion, SAFRA and Help for Heroes, to name but a few. There are others. We've also been working with local cadet organisations to develop plans for the march through the country park and ensure the involvement of our young people. We'll also have activities for young people provided by Forces Fitness, Dragons Rugby, and we're also working closely with the town council to maximise the benefits to the town as a whole. This isn't just a Caldiot event, though. Other town councils have agreed to provide free coach travel for their residents to the event to make it accessible and easier, obviously environmentally, to get as many people as possible to the event. There are other more specific activities planned for the day, such as musical performances and demonstrations, but the timeline for these is still being worked up. We still need volunteers, so please, everybody, get the word out. In terms of engagement and promotion, our community development team have been distributing flyers and posters, and every member has got a little stash of flyers in your pigeonhole. If you can pick those up and distribute them in your awards, that would be incredibly helpful. Roadside banners have been installed in key locations. You may well have seen those around the county. We're following this up with news outlets, radio stations and others to promote across various media. This is in addition to our usual social media activity, Please Share. As we get more confirmed assets, we'll begin to use these as part of the campaign. I'm devastated that Tums gone, because I was hoping he would pick up on the Spitfire thing, and it could be a headline, couldn't it? It would be lovely. So hopefully, he'll watch it on catch-up and he'll get that. If anybody needs to book a ticket, other than via a QR code, they can call into their hubs and staff there will assist them. So if you've got residents who are not digitally enabled, please encourage them to call into hubs, and they can help them get a ticket. You asked about access, and as far as I know, there are a number... When you book your ticket, you've got the option to book a car parking space, but obviously they're limited, and we're working with colleagues in Transport around mitigating impact on the local community through as many park and ride facilities as we can do. Caldiot Castle is obviously used to hosting really large events, so all the options have been explored to ensure it's successful for the local community. I think I rushed through everything there. If I've missed anything, please let me know.
Right, thanks. Thank you, councillor. I allowed a bit of discretion there. Councillor Dimmock?
I'll be quick. Wow. I am so impressed. I'm really looking forward to this, and I think it's going to be amazing for Sevenside area. The one thing that I do want to discuss with you in a bit more depth is reaching out to our elderly who aren't digitally savvy. Obviously, you said a number of things. I think the newspapers are going to be key for them, but I am so excited. My day is clear. I will be there, and I hope everyone else will as well. So thank you, councillor Sandals.
Right, thank you. And I very much regret to cover it all that and abuse my position in the chair. Just to stress, the event is totally free, but people must have tickets, partly for security purpose, partly to have numbers of crowd numbers, and that can be achieved. If you're not digitally savvy, in your local library, they will sort it for you. But I take the point that we need to get Tom and Yagus and the other newspapers really on board on this one. Yep. Right, where were we? I got overexcited by that one? No. Okay, we're moving on to twelve H. Well, you were going, councillor Dimmock?
Okay. Given the role our vital role our leisure centres play in supporting our community's health and wellbeing, what is the council doing to urgently secure funding for Caldiot Leisure Centre and its refurbishment to ensure residents have access to high-quality accessible facilities that encourage an active and healthy lifestyle like our Monmeth, Chepstow and Caldiot... Monmeth, Abogavenny and Chepstow provide?
Again, thank you for the question, councillor Dimmock. We completely recognise the vital role that Caldiot Leisure Centre plays in supporting the community's health and wellbeing, ensuring continued access to high-quality accessible leisure facilities is a priority for the council. While a full-scale refurbishment would be ideal, we have to be realistic. Funding remains a significant challenge at the moment. Despite pursuing several external grant opportunities in recent years, these unfortunately haven't been successful. Major investment decision like this must also align with the broader placemaking plan currently underway, which aims to regenerate the High Street and in time enhance leisure opportunities across the town. That said, we've not stood still. The council has already made significant investments in Caldiot Leisure Centre to improve the experience for users and will continue to do so. Recent and ongoing improvements include installation of LED energy-efficient floodlight out on the sports pitch, new swimming pool covers saving energy and costs, switch from tank-fed to mains-fed water for better pressure, making the showering experience much nicer, upgraded chemical treatment for the pool, which is safer for staff and more cost-effective, a fully refurbished multi-use games area with a purpose-built accessible floodlit basketball court. If you've not seen the court, it's amazing. I'm sure most of you have, you know, from the area, but it's brilliant. It's very well-used and really popular, when I spoke to the officers date before yesterday. A new dedicated indoor cycling studio and cutting-edge techno-gym spin bikes, which opened in March. We're also developing a business case to upgrade the fitness suite at the moment, because it's getting on a bit now, isn't it? And introduce a backwash water recovery system which will improve energy efficiency and reduce costs. Subject, again, to securing grant funding. Retaining and growing our user base is essential. We've seen a steady growth in membership. I think Mary Anne alluded to it earlier as well, particularly in the Learn to Swim programme and the Exercise Referral Scheme, which you will have seen some media releases about recently. That is really, really having a great impact. These successes, of course, help build the case for future investment. Finally, the centre also hosts the Friday Night Positive Futures initiative, supported by the Police and Crime Commissioner. Using sport, as we know, to engage young people, this programme is already having a positive impact on the youth in the area, with early feedback showing a reduction already in antisocial behaviour. I would need to state that any future investment decision will need to be taken in line with the council's capital strategy and the competing demands on the council's finite capital resources. However, in short, while large-scale refurbishment is challenging right now, we absolutely remain committed to ongoing improvement and to keeping the centre a cornerstone of community wellbeing in Caldiot and the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sandals, and I hope you continue to thrive to improve that fitness suite, because it is extremely tired and not exactly the most inviting. But the team at Caldiot are exceptional, and everyone always says how amazing they are. Sticking with physical health, we know how important our skate parks are and how well-loved they are by young people, and should offer a safe space for skating, blading, riding, BMX-ing and scooting. It's great for physical activity and skill development and social interaction and just fun. However, there have been a number of posts on social media lately with regards to Caldiot and Chepstow, broken drains, holes, like this offers a real risk to our young people that use them. Children in wellies trying to empty the bowls of water, it is not good enough, really, and we want to encourage children to get out and use these facilities that we provide. So can I ask what's happening with those repair works to the skate parks?
Okay, yeah, thanks for that. I know that Chepstow is all up and running now. It's been cleared, the drain's been unblocked. There's obviously some deeper issue there, which, having spoke to, you know, the lead officer yesterday, is ongoing, but it's currently clear and dry and, you know, usable, and the kids are all back there. Regarding the Caldiot one, it's very old, it's very tired, it is... I mean, there are sort of... There's lots of discussion around it at the moment. It would take a huge amount of money to obviously replace it, and that's in the future plans, definitely, because it's, you know, when it's full of kids on their skateboards, I mean, I've taken my grandson down it, it's great, he loved it. He's moved on now, he's a bit more advanced, but yeah, it's in need of investment. I think we recognise... a bit more advanced. But yeah, it's in need of investment. I think we recognise that, and that's something that we'll have to look at in the future when there's some money available, and I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, moving on to question 12I, councillor Rachel Buckler, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is a question to the Cabinet Member for Rural Affairs, Housing and Tourism, who happens to be sitting conveniently next to me. The lifeblood of rural hamlets and villages are often the community assets such as local public houses. They are a vital part of knitting together our communities and preventing rural isolation. A thriving rural pub is like a beacon of hope and hospitality. They are an essential way for friends and neighbours to keep in touch, have local get-togethers and keep rural communities alive. When they close, as has the star on the hill at Lanverhangel Torry Minith, it devastates the area. Would the Cabinet Member for Rural Affairs please commit to gathering together an MCC-led community asset team that local communities can access for advice and help on how to go about a community-led bid to be able to buy their local public house for the benefit of all?
Thanks for the question. I was in Lanverhangel Torry Minith at the weekend, and it's a lovely spot, and I can see that the church and the pub are the twin anchors of that community. So it was very sad to see that the star on the hill had closed, and it would be a great achievement if it could be saved and could join the, I think it's over 150, community-owned pubs around the country. And it would be wonderful to strengthen the support which Monmouthshire Council offers to community enterprise, but I don't think we're in a position at the moment to recruit a new team. Fortunately, we have that expertise within the community development team, which would be the first point of contact, I think, for anybody in any community in the county wanting to set up any kind of new facility. And also, within the Gavwo team, there's a lot of expertise there. But part of their role is to broker specialist expertise, and we are fortunate that we have Compass in Wales, funded by the Welsh Government, to provide that kind of support for community buyouts and enterprises across Wales. But I think the knowledge experts in the field of community enterprise and community pubs are probably the Plunkett Foundation, who have been providing that kind of support to rural community enterprises for over 100 years, including community-owned pubs and shops. Of course, the best experts in this kind of thing are often the people who've done it, so I would urge anybody who's interested in taking that project forward to take a look and to join the Pub is the Hub network of community pubs around the country. I wish them all the success, and I looked forward to hearing more.
Councillor Buckler.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, councillor. I think it's so important to highlight the intrinsic value of a place where people in rural communities can gather, rural isolation. We know that there have been an upsurge in farmers committing suicide with the stress and strain of trying to make a living, and they feel very isolated, all the rural communities. So I want to highlight this. It's a really important thing, and I'm very glad that you, as the Cabinet Member, are so positive, and I look forward to talking to you more about it. But thank you for your response.
Thank you. I didn't really spot a question there. I don't know if you want. You're okay. Done. Right, thank you. We'll move on then, please, to question 12J from councillor Bromfield.
Thank you, Chair. What is the Cabinet Member's position on the loss of prime agricultural land for energy generation?
Thanks very much, councillor Bromfield. An important question, but I do not believe that I should have a position that could be applied to all proposals for energy generation. The challenge for all of us is to find a balance between the undoubted need to extend renewable energy generation and the need to protect agricultural land. We owe it, all of us, to future generations to provide both energy security and food security. So my view is that we must find a balance and not seek a fixed position for or against energy generation. I note that there are new councils elected in England which are coming out with just these fixed positions. We are against renewable energy generation, full stop. I do not think that is a helpful attitude to take. Instead, we should undertake, through the planning process, a case-by-case appraisal of any planning application to extend energy generation. Now, I think all of us have read the papers and that we know that in councillor Bromfield's ward, a planning application may, in the near future, be submitted to Welsh Government, and I am sure that councillor Bromfield will fulfil to the full her representative duty to present the views of all members in her ward. The application, as I understand it, but it is not yet submitted, is likely to be of sufficient scale that it will be referred directly to the Welsh Government for determination. Monmouthshire County Council will be asked for factual information. We have already given a view on what is referred to as the screening application, the question of whether there should be an environmental impact assessment, and quite appropriately and predictably, we have been firm with the view that, of course, there should be an environmental impact assessment. When Welsh Government considers the application, it will invite comments from all who have an interest. If and when that occurs, I would encourage all local members, residents, communities, to submit their views at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for that response. It is disappointing that you won't take a position on this. I understand where you're coming from, that there needs to be a balance. But I've got over 200 acres potentially in my ward going to become black fields. I think that there is a contradiction in Welsh Government's policy. There's better alternatives, the infrastructure is inadequate, there's a massive loss of agricultural land, and there's a huge detrimental impact on my rural community. So I really would ask the Cabinet Member again that if this does come forward as a planning application, will the administration take the side of my residents who are deeply concerned?
Councillor Griffiths.
Thanks again, and when the appraisal takes place, it will include a large number of factors. I would seek to ensure that it includes a large number of factors. The scale of any proposal, the visual impact of any proposal, the impact on habitat, on biodiversity, on landscape, all these things will need to be appraised, and it is on the basis of that appraisal that this council would submit comments on the application.
Thank you. Right, move on to the next question, which is again from councillor Bromfield.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the Highways officers for working with me on speeding issues in Langgaby. However, data collected and measures that have been taken in recent years shows a limited impact. Can the Cabinet Member outline any permanent solutions being considered to effectively reduce speeds and improve safety for residents and all road users?
Thank you, councillor Bromfield. It is disappointing, isn't it? I understand that the speed reduction is there, also that there are speed indicator devices on the main road, but still, we're not sure that actually it's being obeyed. I'm aware also that GoSafe have attended the area in the past, so I think one thing that we need to do is to, and I'll ask officers to request that they attend again, particularly if the figures continue to show lack of compliance. Beyond that, it's really hard to know what physical measures would be acceptable. I know they can be very unpopular, and obviously it requires capital investment, but we need to discuss it more. I think perhaps the first thing to do would be to try to get GoSafe to come back, because that might be the faster and more efficient solution. Thank you.
Supplementary?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, councillor Mayby. This is a highly emotive issue in my ward, because there was a tragic death a while ago, so residents do still feel very concerned. So I just simply want to invite the Cabinet Member to attend public meetings, listen to my residents, see what the best options going forward are for some permanent traffic calming measures, and I'd appreciate it as well if the Cabinet Member would arrange a member's seminar with GoSafe, because we are all dealing with issues of speeding in our wards, and we've never actually had that. So I think that that would be a really sensible, proactive way forward.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. And yeah, of course, I'll attend a public meeting. I'd really like to do it so along with GoSafe, so that I'm not standing there going, oh, that's someone else's responsibility, that we can both be there together. But yeah, I like your suggestion about perhaps having a session on road safety interventions in particular with speed, so we'll talk to officers about trying to arrange that. Thanks.
One more question. Can I just say that I've invited Public Services to hold that meeting through councillor Watts?
Thank you for that. But we've got three questions left, and then the item of exempt business. I want to run it straight through to the end without a formal break. So if you do feel you're going to need a comfort break or whatever, you might want to go join the remaining questions. No disrespect to those, but you will need to be here for the vote on exempt business. Okay, moving on then to 12L from county councillor Martin Newell. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair, and congratulations on your election to Chair of the council. Yes, I've got a question for the Cabinet Member for Climate Change and Environment. Please, would you be kind enough to provide an update to my residents that I represent regarding Goldwyne Lane in Monmouth that is currently subject to an experimental traffic regulation order that restricts vehicle or cars' access for residents, visitors, deliveries and emergency services. Many thanks.
Yes, certainly. The consultation period has recently come to a close, so I'm sure that's why you're asking. However, we have got up to 18 months within the experimental traffic order, but as promised, we will review the data we've got to date shortly and make a decision about the way to go forward. I haven't reviewed the data yet. We have received positive and negative feedback, and it's important that wherever is put in place really protects the safety for all road users. Just to make sure that it's clear, emergency vehicles are not restricted from using that route, that that small section of road can be used by emergency vehicles as well as residents. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Newell.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the Cabinet Member for that answer. I really do appreciate it. While I'm thanking people, I'd like to, before I ask my question, thank councillor Birch, councillor Lucas and our MCC colleague Paul Sullivan for attending a Monmouth Town Council Active Travel Meeting, in which we discussed, and it was agreed, that moving forward, we would look to work with the Cabinet Member to create a shared space for all road users, pedestrians, cars, bikes. And in the spirit of this, and in the spirit of full transparency, before any final decision is made, will she meet with me to residents to listen to arguments on both sides, so everyone can be informed? And again, I thank you for your answer.
Chair, may I make a point of clarification? We did discuss the option of a shared space. I cannot say that I agreed to move towards it. It was an option that was discussed at that meeting, and perhaps councillor Mayby and I will, we're aware that that is one of the views put forward for consideration.
Chair, if I could just respond. It was actually the view of the whole room, and councillor Lucas will back that up, that we wanted a shared space, to consider a shared space for all safety of road users. Many thanks.
All right, okay, right. I'll go back to councillor Mayby. Councillor Birch has used up 30 seconds of your time now.
Thanks. I'll just quickly say I'll definitely review all of the options, and I remember that shared space was one of the possibilities going forward. We'll just have to find the capital for it, if you like, the deluxe solution, but I'll come back to you on that. Okay.
Thank you, councillor. I look forward to working with you. Many thanks.
Thank you. Right, we'll move on to 12M, and this is councillor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Chair. Could the Cabinet Member for Social Care, Safeguarding and Accessible Health Services, please clarify how many residents he's aware of that await a social work assessment and give an indication of how long they're waiting and what the kind of longest wait times are? Thank you.
Councillor Chandler.
Yeah, thank you councillor Taylor for asking this question, because it gives me the opportunity to highlight the progress that this council has made over the last year or so, in spite of the financial challenges that we face. We report monthly to Welsh Government on how many people have had an assessment, how many are waiting for an initial assessment and for how long. For context, in the last full year, 2024 to 2025, we had approximately 3,500 referrals into the service, and for all those referrals that went on to a full assessment, the average waiting time between referral and assessment was 27 days. In March this year, we completed 347 social care needs assessments for adult service users, and those assessments undertaken by the three integrated service teams in North, South and Central Monmouthshire, the Community Mental Health Team and the Community Learning Disability Team. As of yesterday, across these five teams, there are 107 adults waiting for a social care needs assessment. This is a significant reduction on previous years. So a year ago, that figure was 211, and it's now 107. However, it is our objective to drive waiting times down even lower by continuing with the actions we're taking. In terms of how long, currently, of those 107, there are 24 who have been waiting for no more than 14 days, a further 36 people who have been waiting for between 15 and 30 days, 46 who have been waiting for between 31 and 90 days, and one who has had to wait for over 90 days, although there is a specific context to that particular individual that would be inappropriate for me to share in this public space. I should say, we don't see people in the order that they come onto the list. We triage it so that we see the most urgent and critical cases first, prioritising and reprioritising waiting lists on a daily and weekly basis. Safeguarding and critical hospital discharges are given top priority. By contrast, some people are on the waiting list but are not in a position to have an assessment at this particular moment in time, such as those who are undergoing treatment in hospitals, and some of our longer waits are in this category. But we do recognise the impact that lengthy waits have on people, because they can feel anxious, their situation may get worse, or more positively, they may find other ways of getting their needs met. So to help them while they're waiting, we give them preventative information and advice, including how to contact the service if things change. So in conclusion, I just want to repeat what I said earlier, that while we've made great strides in reducing waiting times, it is our objective to drive waiting times down even lower by continuing with the positive actions that we're taking. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor, supplementary?
No supplementary, thank you, Chair.
No question, therefore no answer. Right, so we'll move straight back to you then with the final question, 12N. Yep, far away.
Thank you, Chair. So I appreciate we have discussed some of the restrictions on the forum and at Maga, but however, I would appreciate it, and if the Cabinet Member is not in a position as we speak, I know we discussed it on Monday, but my question is, could the Cabinet Member, so this is the Cabinet Member for Climate Change and Environment, please provide an update on the potential impact update on the potential impact on the junction with the M4 at MEGA in relation to the proposed introduction of the Severn Bridge 7.5 ton weight limit, sorry, I'm quite tired now. So, if, I appreciate the Cabinet Member may not be in a position just yet, obviously when I put the question, I didn't know exactly where we would be, but if not, would it be okay if we could receive a full written update from the Cabinet Member as it's available? Chair, thank you.
Thanks, yeah, we're on the last lap now, aren't we? So, yeah, we've discussed it quite a lot, not so much around the motion, but actually in the Public Services Committee session on Monday, which I think we went into a lot more detail. Obviously, we're all really concerned about that, that particular exit and the impact there and I know that my colleagues councillor Crook and Sandals have been pressing for some time for something to be done about the traffic flow problems, that whenever the M48 bridge is closed, to make sure that local residents can get in and out, as well as keeping the flow along the strategic road network. And this is, this is going to be, you know, a really serious problem for us even going forward. The need for traffic flow data, which we don't have yet, we've only got the average number of trucks crossing the bridge, you know, which is between 3,000 and 4,000 a day, which is pretty shocking, but we don't know how many of them are going to be doubling back or where they're going to be going once they've crossed the bridge, but we've asked for traffic flow data. And so, as soon as we've got something, I'm sure we'll try and share it in the most efficient possible way, not necessarily a written update from me, but in some way for the full council to make sure everyone's kept informed. I think that's probably all I can say for now, I'm sorry.
Is there a supplementary?
Only do we know when we are expecting that information, Chair. Thank you.
Back to you.
I don't think I do, I'm sorry, but all I can say is just repeat what I said earlier, which is that we are, officers are meeting weekly with Sutra and National Highways to try and work our way through these issues, the short and the medium, as well as the longer-term solutions. Thank you.
Right, thank you. That concludes all the questions and I thank councillors and Cabinet Members. I reckon we're going to take over two hours on those, but we did it in not much more than an hour, so well done on that. But we do now have to move back to the item 10, which is exempt business, so have we switched off the recording? Are we good to go? Yep, okay, so I believe this is a report.